Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our meeting for the afternoon of October 22nd, 2019. Today's invocation will be delivered by the Branham High School Wind Ensemble. And Councilmember Foley, who's just returning from a photo op, will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited to introduce the Branham High School Wind Ensemble. The 20 students performing today represent the Branham High Wind Ensemble, the premier music group at Branham High School. The ensemble includes some of the best music students in the Campbell Union High School District and beyond. Many of these magnificent student musicians have been members of county, state, and even national honor bands. Led by Band Director Chris Knolls, the Branham High Wind Ensemble has performed across California and in Hawaii. We're lucky to have them perform for us today. The Branham High Wind Ensemble will now perform "Salvation Is Created" by Pavel Chesnikov.
Bravo.
That is absolutely lovely. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was tremendous. All right, well, we've gotten off to a great start, thanks to the Branham High School Wind Ensemble. We are joined by the Anderson Virtual Learning Academy. Thank you for those of you who are joining us from the academy, I think, in the back. If you wouldn't mind standing and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have just one ceremonial item this afternoon, and I invite any councilmembers to come on down if they'd like to join. I see Carl Guardino, who is CEO of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group and Race Director, along with the Race Manager Chris Wyler. And I see several prominent leaders of other organizations. Kevin Zwick, CEO of the Housing Trust Silicon Valley. Kathleen King, CEO of Healthier Kids Foundation. And Saban Kenny, the Senior Director of Global Community Affairs at Applied Materials. Applied Materials has branded this effort and supported it for many, many years, and we're grateful. Come on down, and we will talk turkey. In San Jose, we are honored... It's actually the largest Thanksgiving Day turkey shot in the universe. And it was founded in 2005. It was an idea that came from Carl and his wife Leslie. I think as they were driving through a town, I think it was Sacramento, and they saw a race going on on Thanksgiving Day and said, "Why can't we do this and raise some money?" And my gosh, have they done it. Now, we routinely see more than 25,000 participants every year. The race is celebrating its 15th year, and in those 15 years, this race has resulted in almost $9 million contributed to charities, including the organizations represented here. Yes. So in the first 14 years, that has enabled 2.9 million pounds of food to be delivered to hungry families, 60,000 vision screenings, and 4,000 pairs of glasses for children, and 3,738 individuals placed into affordable housing. That is quite a legacy. So Carl, thank you for all your leadership. Could you please say a few words?
Well, Mayor, thank you. People usually have the good sense never to entrust me with a microphone. But I recognize I now have 52 seconds left. We want to thank the City of San Jose, the Mayor, councilmembers, and the citizens of San Jose for supporting this effort for a community charity run and walk, where on a day of thanks, we remember that there are folks much needier than the people who are blessed to be in this room at City Hall today. Our goal this year is Mission One Million. It's to raise and donate $1 million for five great local nonprofits helping needy families throughout the Bay Area. Second Harvest Food Bank Silicon Valley, the Food Bank of Santa Cruz County, the Silicon Valley Housing Trust, represented today by Kevin Zwick, the Health Trust, and the Healthier Kids Foundation, represented by Kathleen King, whose car broke down four blocks away. So our proceeds this year will go to getting Kathleen a new car. The word that we all want is impact. The impact, if we hit our goals this year alone, is 520,000 more healthy meals for Second Harvest Food Bank, 400,000 healthy meals for the Food Bank in Santa Cruz, 3,100 treatment plans for people with chronic diseases through the Health Trust, 3,000 vision and hearing screenings just for kids in San Jose schools alone through the Healthier Kids Foundation, and 300 homeless people securing sustainable homes through our Housing Trust Silicon Valley. I'll end with this: You are all wondering, what on earth might you be doing on Thanksgiving morning? I'm here to answer that question. You'll be with us, right down the block, for our 15th Annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. Mayor and council, thanks for leading by example.
All right, on orders of the day, does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Let's vote on Vice Mayor Jones's motion. Onto the closed session report, Rick.
Excuse me, the council met in closed session. There is no report out of closed session today.
All right. On next is the consent calendar. I'd like to pull Item 2.5, the travel report. Are there any other items to be pulled?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent.
All right. Let's vote on... Actually, yeah, I'll just pull the Item 2.5, and perhaps I can be all wrapped up. On the council travel report, I got on a plane about a week and a half ago to go to Copenhagen to represent the city, along with Kerry Romanow. The C40 Organization, which is sort of the premier global climate organization for climate action in cities, was presenting an award, along with Bloomberg Philanthropies, to the city of San Jose, recognizing us, as well as a couple of other cities, for our progress on American Cities Climate Action Challenge. I probably got the words wrong there on that challenge, but clearly, the work that this council did in approving the REACH Code quite recently, and the ongoing work led by Ken Davies, and Kerry Romanow, and Lori Mitchell, and many, many others in the city, is now really starting to attract global attention. I unfortunately could not stay for the press conference that we were having with several other mayors, or any of the award events, or the rest of the conference, because I stayed there for a night and the next morning heard about the blackouts, and jumped on a plane and came home. But I did enjoy a wonderful 45-minute jaunt through the city on the way to the airport. So fortunately, Kerry was there to receive the accolades from the city, and I just want the council to know that the hard work that so many are putting in here is really starting to attract global interest and setting a standard for the rest of the country to follow. All right. I'd ask if that could be included in the motion. Councilmember Camus? I believe you... Did you make the motion on the consent?
Yes.
Okay, would that be...
Yeah, yes, yeah, we can...
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's hear it with the secondor. All right, let's vote. All right, we're on then to Item 3.1, which is the report of the city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Item 3.3 is the city manager's annual report, and there is a report for this item, because it's all about the budget, and that's why Jim's here to tell us more. Jim, thanks for the big binder of materials.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Shannon. I'm the Budget Director. I am joined here upon the dais by Bonnie Duong, our Deputy Budget Director, Bryce Ball, our Operating Budget Coordinator, and Selena Uybanda, our Financial Status Coordinator. We're here to kind of walk through the 2018-2019 annual report. I want to really thank all of the folks in the Budget Office, in addition to those folks here, but also Claudia Chang, our Deputy Budget Director, and Enrique Dianda, our Capital Budget Coordinator, who helped put this together, along with the Budget Office staff and all the departments that are here to answer questions later. Believe it or not, this is the hardest document that we do all year long, so we are very happy to have it to present for you today. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of the city's revenues and expenditures when compared to the actuals. This complies with the city charter, which requires us to come before you 90 days after the close of the fiscal year to report on how we did, and so we will be doing that today. It provides a technical comparison of budget to actuals. It also combines, looks at, the comparison of estimated to actual ending fund balances for all funds, and provides a summary of the 2018-2019 year-end reserves by fund, based on this analysis of prior performance and updated information that we have for the current fiscal year, including past direction from the city council. The annual report also recommends a number of budget adjustments for 1920. So for 1819, we had a good year. Revenues performed generally as expected. We had assumed some moderate economic growth, you know, slow to moderate, and we were pretty close to those estimates. So those were good. We have good economic indicators that I'll go forward through you a little bit later regarding employment, construction activity, housing. On the expenditure side, we also met expectations. They're generally ended the year within or below budget. The general fund has a small additional surplus of fund balance, where revenues came in a little bit above estimated levels, and we had some savings on the expenditure side, and we'll walk through how we allocate out that. There are also a number of actions to recognize grants and reimbursements, address needs in some special and capital funds, and then address a few urgent fiscal and program needs in the general fund that I will walk through later. First, talk a little bit about just a few of the key economic factors that influence the city's budget. One of the ones being the unemployment rate. As you can see here, we've had a nice, long downward path in the unemployment rate. We ended June 2019 at 2.7%, which beat the prior year's rate of 2.9%. That unemployment rate is about, is still there. At the end of August, we were at that same 2.7%. So this is good. I think this tells us that we are, you know, indeed in a, the tail, not the tail end, but a very mature recovery cycle, where there's not a lot of room to press that unemployment rate down further. So we kind of see we're kind of moving a little bit sideways there at a very low unemployment rate. The median price of single-family homes is shown on this graph here, which is, also kind of talks about the history of where we've been, and a little bit of the recent past, where we saw median single-family home sales peak in May of 2018, and it's been trending down a little bit ever since then. We factor that into our year-end estimates for 1819, as well as our preliminary projections for 1920. So we're going to keep an eye on this, because, you know, housing is one of the leading indicators. The, we still, though, did have another good year for our construction and conveyance tax revenues, which are generated by the property sales. For construction tax revenues, this is a good measure of the private development activity out there. So these, the orange and gray bars represent the building and structure construction tax and the construction excise tax, respectively. And they are revenues that are generated when someone builds a new building or remodels an existing building, and those revenues go into the traffic capital program for help transportation improvements and paving. And as you can see here, we've maintained a very strong private development market, which is, so far in the early stages, has continued on into 1920. To talk about a few of the select revenue categories, what we have here are property and sales tax, utility tax, and business tax. These are our top four revenues. This is a little bit over 50% of the total general fund revenues. One of the things I want to point out is the continuing steady growth of property and sales tax. Sales tax, you know, had a little bit of that spike there in 1819, because, as you may remember, we had some of the activity that should have been booked in 1718 was instead booked in 1819. So you see that little bit of a peak up there. And, you know, so property tax and sales tax goes, so goes the city's revenues generally. So those are by far our largest, and those are the ones that we make sure that we try to get those as accurate as possible. A couple of other interesting ones are the utility tax, which is not as economically sensitive, more generated based on the rates that are provided to customers, and, more importantly, the customer's usage of those utilities like gas and electricity. And then also, business tax is one of our key drivers, although quite a bit smaller. And you can see that little bump up there since 1617, when we did that adjustment to the various business tax rates. Talking about our fund balance in the general fund, so we ended the year with a gross fund balance of $365 million. So it's about $75.4 million above the estimate that we used to adopt the 2019-20 budget. And it's comprised of a couple of key things here. So one of them is, we had year-end sale proceeds related to the fire training center. As you might recall, we had the authorization for that purchase and sale agreement earlier, but that sale didn't close until the end of June. And so because of that, even though we recognized that money, which is about, I think, $37 million, and put that into a reserve for future, for the future relocation of that site, that money was not rebudgeted into 1920, so it shows up as additional fund balance, even though that's really restricted for the use of replacing that site. We also have to recognize that the development fee program had additional revenues and expenditure savings that is part of that $75.4 million, but is, again, as I'll talk about in the next slide, is are restricted to development fee program uses. And then we had a pretty significant chunk of personal services savings, you know, more than maybe we typically have, as, and they were a bit related to the pre-funding of retirement that we have done for the last number of years, although we're not doing that in 1920. So when we, when the city goes and pre-funds the retirement, we get a little bit of a discount on the overall contribution to the retirement system by, you know, fronting some cash, borrowing a little bit through transparticipation notes, and then we pay ourselves back over the course of the year through the payroll process. You know, as we have developed the number of tiers, the different accounting regulations around retirement, the different retirement rates, that process has become more complex, and we need to be conservative throughout the year as those, that payback is going on. And so we were tracking, looked to be a little bit high throughout 1819. We knew we weren't going to end all that high, but it was tough for us to estimate what that actual fund balance was going to be related to personal services. So we had a little bit extra this year than we typically otherwise would have. Again, that's a problem we won't have in 1920, because when we did the analysis for the forecast for 1920, that pre-funding didn't really pencil out. And so it'll be a much more straightforward process this year for the payroll deductions for retirement. So when you kind of get to the end of it, as I show you here, our real fund balance is really $27.4 million, which is how we will walk through the allocation here. And, so let's see here. Make sure I have my page. This summarizes the different categories of how the fund balance is allocated. All of the actions we do here to allocate general fund fund balances guided by city council policy 1-818, where first, we look at what are those things that are required to go to specific uses that we have to do. So those are the development fee program reconciliation I talked about earlier, the rebudget of the fire training center, replacement. And then we have a variety of miscellaneous rebudgets and cleanup actions to carry forward stuff that began, or that was occurring in 1818, that needs to continue on into 1920. So then we get to our $27.4 million of fund balance. And the first category for allocation are those required technical or rebalancing actions to make sure that we are correcting any technical problems that we found after the adoption of the budget, or based on new or updated information to make sure that we meet existing city council direction on the various programs and projects that we have committed to. So that's about $10.6 million. We've got about $780,000 in the category for grants, reimbursements, and fee activities, which are to recognize grants or specific fees, or to true-up various grant or fee-related revenues that nets about $800,000 to the general fund. We have a few urgent fiscal program needs of $7.6 million that we'll talk about in upcoming slides. And then at the end of that, we have $10 million that is left over, which we are recommending to allocate per city council policy 1-18 for the budget stabilization reserve, and for backup power generation for 32 critical facilities and some fueling stations. And we'll talk through all of those. So for the required technical rebalancing actions, we have several of them here. I'm going to talk through a few of them. So the general liability claims, the first one of $4 million, is based on an analysis with the city attorney's office of the current and potential litigation settlements and claim awards that the city is potentially facing. So we want to make sure we are, have enough resources to deal with that. For the IT project management line there for $1.9 million, this is in compliance with direction that we received through council, through the mayor's June budget direction, which asked the administration to look at vacancies throughout the city and vacancy savings in 1819, to have those reprioritized, so that we could add some project managers to implement critical and high-impact IT projects. And so we performed that analysis over the summer. And, you know, what we found is a little bit what we've had been seeing for a while. While we see a lot of, a pretty significant chunk of vacancy savings, those are related to the churn of the employees being hired and movement through, folks leaving the organization coming back on. There are not a lot of stagnant positions out there that have not been hired without a backfill or some other, some of the way to reprioritize those resources to accomplish the same task. So what we are recommending here is to take the fund balance, the vacancy savings that was generated in 1819, and apply it to the six positions in the IT department on an ongoing basis, and we'll balance that out as part of the proposed budget process for 2021. In addition, with $1 million for contractual services to assist with those projects and programs that require specialized assistance and to build capacity for the project management team. The focus areas for these are going to be emergency management technologies, development services transformation, data governance and business analytics, mobile and wireless technologies, development services transformation, data governance and business analytics, mobile and wireless technologies, business process improvement and automation, and Internet of Things platforms and services. The next allocation of $1.5 million is for the city's attorney's office to make sure that there are sufficient resources for contractual services litigation where the city requires outside council support. There's an allocation of $1.5 million to increase the contingency reserve per city council policy, to make sure that the contingency reserve always represents approximately 3% of the general fund's operating expenditures, which, so this would take it up from $38.5 million to $40 million. We set the level of $38.5 million as part of the base budget, but the actions that we do to modify the proposed, and then again here in the annual report, that 3% threshold would be about $40 million. We have another entry for a, for the library related to an agreement with San Jose State University regarding baseline IT cost. We have another item for cultural facilities operation support, again, related to the mayor's June budget message that the city council approved, to look at those cultural facilities that took a pretty significant haircut in 2011-12, to look at what their, if that haircut hadn't happened, you know, what would it take to kind of get them back to where they would have been with a modest increase, capping that increase at about $400,000. So the administration performed that analysis in Kerry Adams' Hattner's group, and we have allocation there for the few city facilities, the culture facilities, which would be $260,000 for the tech interactive, $50,000 for the San Jose Museum of Art, about $46,500 for the Children's Discovery Museum, Hammer Theater Center of $30,000, and the Mexican Heritage Plaza of $13,500. Just the last couple here I'll mention, we have a transfer to the Building and Structure Construction Tax Fund that aligns with previous direction to set aside the business cooperation sales tax proceeds that were related to North San Jose construction, and set that aside to supplement a potential shortfall in the North San Jose traffic impact fee. And so that was identified through the in-lu fee audits. We want to make sure we're transferring that over now. So this was received a couple of years ago, but we're transferring that back over now to be in compliance with that, with that direction. We have $250,000 for a 3-1-1 call transition to reserve, to make sure that we're appropriately staffed up for when that transition of 3-1-1 comes over to the customer contact center. And then we've got a couple of net zero shifts for the fire training center relocation. Again, we want to tap that reserve that we have rebudgeted and start the design process. So we have $3.5 million coming from the reserve into a live appropriation, so we can spend against it in 1920. And then we have a shift in the Department of Transportation for electrical services related to $450,000 for electrician vacancies, and we'll bring some contractual support to make sure those services can continue. The first category at the top there is, again, that grants, reimbursements, and fees, where we have a net positive revenue of about $800,000. Then I want to walk through the urgent fiscal and program needs. Then I want to walk through the urgent fiscal and program needs. We have just a few of these. So the first one is the Police Guardian Rapid Response Program, which is a program that was initiated by the police department shortly after the Gilroy Garlic Festival to ensure that there are officers dedicated to, to schools so they can respond very quickly in the case of an active shooter, as well as provide additional resources for certain special events. So there's funding of about $3 million for the overtime for this program, as well as for additional vehicles. $2.3 million is a transfer to the municipal golf course fund related to pay down of the Los Lagos debt. So we received direction as part of the March and June budget messages to really prioritize the use of one-time resources to help pay down our existing debt obligations. And as in alignment with that direction, this is some of the opportunities that we look for to allocate one-time resources to position us better in the future. This strategy was similar to the strategy we employed early on so that we could sell the Hayes Mansion. We used some one-time resources to pay down debt related to the Hayes. That allowed that property to be sold, which then generated an additional one-time resources in addition to reducing our ongoing obligations for the subsidy of that facility so that we could reprioritize those resources for additional debt paydown. And so we want to kind of further that process here. By, by, by doing this, what we'll have done is for the, in the March and June messages, plus with the actions here in the annual report, we will have reduced our ongoing debt obligations by about $700,000 to the general fund, and we'll have reduced the payoff period from 2030 to 2026. So kind of chipping away at those, at that ability to, you know, lower our debt obligations on that site and potentially position us so that we could be more, more flexible in how that site is used and managed. We have $1.5 million for the community plan to end homelessness. This is a citywide appropriation that will support the interdepartmental efforts to operationalize a locally tailored work plan in support of the Pillar Three of the community plan to end homelessness, enhancing service levels in pilot project areas, or where there are disproportionate impacts from unsheltered individuals. And finally, in this category, we have $200,000 for a city facilities safety assessment to conduct an evaluation and threat assessment consistent with Homeland Security best practices for anti-terrorism, which will inform the development of potential security and operational improvements to protect city-owned facilities and the community and employees who use them. This is paired with a similar allocation in the construction, I'm sorry, the convention center, the Convention and Cultural Affairs Fund, to look at facilities that are related to the convention center operations. So at the end of that, we have about $10 million left, left over. And what City Council Policy 1-18 says is that after you have accounted for your required technical actions and any urgent fiscal program needs, what, the, the next step is to make sure that the, the projected deficit for the next year is fully, fully funded, at least with one-time resources. We had already done that in the proposed budget, so we have $10.9 million set aside as part of the proposed budget to fully fund that anticipated shortfall next year, at least with one-time resources. After that, that shortfall is, is allocated for, then we look to the budget stabilization reserve, unmet deferred infrastructure needs, or any other urgent fiscal, fiscal program needs. And so we're recommending $5 million for the budget stabilization reserve. What this does, it raises that budget stabilization reserve from $27 million to $32 million, bringing our total general purpose reserves, which includes the budget stabilization, the workers' compensation, general liability claims, and the contingency to about 6.5% of operating expenditures, which is consistent with the level that we had in the proposed budget. So we're kind of making sure that we're not getting any worse as the, as the city grows. And we want to keep, keep trying to get to that 10% level that's in the, the city council policy that says, hey, your general purpose reserve should be at 10%. We're keeping ourselves at 6.5% with this action here. And then finally, the, we have $5 million for unmet deferred infrastructure related to providing emergency power generation for 32 critical facilities and a couple of, of fueling stations to make sure that, that we can keep operating when the, when the lights go out. And so we will be deploying resources and certain generators in different city facilities to make sure that we can maintain critical services without interruption in service. Finally, we also have, you know, a number, I just talked a lot about the general fund. We have a number of actions in special funds, and those performances were also fairly strong. So in operating funds for the airport, passenger activity was up 10.8% to 14.9 million passengers, and overall revenue exceeded budget estimates by about 3.1 million. As I mentioned previously, the building and structure construction tax and the construction excise tax were all strong, a little bit below last year, but above the budget estimates. And the CNC taxes, even though we saw that little bit of drop-off in the home sale prices, the revenue remained strong, a little bit below last year's actuals, but above the budget estimates. And we'll keep an eye on that revenue category as we go forward in this current fiscal year. So again, we have a number of, of fund balance reconciliation, rebudget adjustments, technical adjustments in these special and, and capital funds. We also have various adjustments to recognize grants and reimbursements, update costs and revenue estimates based on project timing, and moving forward with a few priority projects and programs, which are all spelled out there in that report. And I've been talking for quite some time. So I want to again, thank the folks who helped make this report possible, and thank the department staff for all of their work that they did to put this document in front of you. And we are all here to answer any questions and look forward to talking with you again about the stuff as part of the mid-year budget review.
Jim, thanks. Thanks to you and Bonnie and Claudia and the entire team. Appreciate the great work, and certainly appreciate that, once again, what we're being presented, you know, we consistently try to stay conservative on estimates and so that we're not put in a position of having to, to make severe cuts because of any surprises. Obviously, this last year, we had only good surprises, it seemed, almost all. And I really appreciate the commitment of dollars to reserves, because I think we all know that the good times won't roll forever. And these were remarkable times over the last year. I just saw that the number that we reported for just the sale of land, that's, you know, one-time, obviously, a benefit, exceeded, I think, $81 million. Perhaps it was 82 million on page two, 23. And obviously, we're never going to be able to realize those kinds of revenues again. That's one time, and we need to think carefully about how we use those one-time revenues. And I appreciate a big chunk when we're going toward rebuilding a fire training center, and obviously, we have a lot of other one-time needs. So I appreciate all that. Want to point out some other highlights, really reflecting great performance of, of various folks on the city team. I think this is the first time I've seen that we've gotten our full allocation from the county on the paramedic program, which is really attributable to the fire department's dramatic improvement in response times on emergency medical calls. Obviously, it's not the money that matters, it's the fact that we're getting to people in peril, and we're doing so consistently above the standard. And I think that's a great, great thing to see, and really a, a strong sign of, of what's happening in the fire department. So I, I just really appreciate that, that emerging. I, I did have a question about the reimbursements we're getting from the successor agency. And I saw it was $2.3 million this year, or last year, I should say. Do we expect that eventually? Is that, is that dollar figure something we expect to increase over time as bonds get paid off, or do we expect it to decrease as project areas expire?
So I, I think that one is really just to offset our cost for being the successor agency itself. So that will, will, will rise, you know, slightly with the cost it takes us as the city, as the, the successor agency to administer those funds, where we will seek, you know, there is now the increment of, of property tax related to CERA properties will continue to grow as, as those values grow up. And so it was just a couple of years ago, I think, in 1718, where we, we received the first chunk of that based on the refinancing. So, so that item there is just to make sure that we are kept whole as the successor agency and enjoy a shop.
And then as the, as the bond debt drops over time and the project areas expire, does that mean we should see a larger number, all things held equal, in the property tax column?
Correct. Yeah. I think it'll, it'll take a while for those, let's see, I think in, in 1819, we had a little bit of a lower level because of some of the CRF debt repayment. So we're going to see a bigger chunk of that in 1920. And that will continue to grow as the, the value of the land grows. I think those bond chunks probably, probably pay off in chunks over time, so we'll probably start seeing chunks of that grow in the future. But yeah, as those bonds get paid off, that amount of revenue will certainly grow.
That's good news. Thank you. Well, this is about as positive an annual report as I've seen numbers, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. Okay. Other questions? Councilor Camus.
Thank you, and thank you for the great report as well. I find it was very well, you know, describing where the money's going. I think you, you did a great job. I, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about, first, the library on, the library, the money that we're, we're finishing the negotiations with San Jose State University, and then the ongoing money of 287,000. Is that, is that an ongoing fee, or is this an excess fee, or have we finished the negotiations with San Jose State University on the IT support?
Yeah. So that, as, as Jill comes down to, to answer this question, that, that payment was for a invoice related to 1718 that was kind of placed on hold as we continued our conversations with the university to make sure that we got at a satisfactory place before we wanted to, to pay that invoice.
Yeah, the payment of 485 was, but then I saw something else that said 287. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon, councilmembers. Jill Born, City Librarian. The answer is, just as Jim said, the, the amount that, that you see reflect the 280, or 485,000 was from a past year 1718. And at that time, we recognized that there had been a rate change, and we asked for sort of an investigation of whether the rate was accurate for the public side of the library. And so it took some time to identify a new rate, and the new rate is reflected in the 287,000 annually going forward.
Okay.
So this is just a correction that gets us all squared.
Right.
And the 287 is in the budget.
Yes, so, but that's the annual rate from now on is 287, not 585.
Correct. Four, yeah, right, not 485.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jill. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm really proud that we're putting away $5 million for a rainy day. I, I concur with the mayor. I, I understand that $5 million will be set aside for emergency, like, whatever those, I guess, gas and, and backup generators. Are we going to be investing anything in electric backup, basically batteries at the community centers? For example, in, in my district, we could not use my library as a, a meeting space because we didn't have like, well, we were expected not to have electricity. We ended up having electricity, but we were telling everybody to go to District Nine and to the Camden Library. Are we going to invest in our own infrastructure other than generators?
Mayor Lucardo, members of the city council, I am Walter Lynn, Deputy Director for Public Works. Councilmember Camus, to answer your question. That is a technology that we're looking into as well. We know that there's been some previous discussions about more newer technologies that are using renewable energy, reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. From a proven technology standpoint, and from a, I guess, from a timeliness standpoint, the emergency generators that are diesel-fueled now, that is off the market, we can get pretty easily, as the PSPS events can happen at any time, earthquakes can happen, other major events. These are proven technology that we have infrastructure and a program in place. That being said, we are looking into more advanced technologies. The cost and the site preparation for some of that technology is something that we have to consider as well. For battery technology to last a facility for up to three days, per se, that'd be a larger amount of battery that we'd have to have as an infrastructure standpoint, the space constraints, et cetera, and then the cost is something to consider. As we look at how we are trying to make our critical facilities more energy resilient with this backup generation, I think we can have a phased-in approach as we start looking at the immediate needs of what we need now, and then looking at the future, how do we try to best incorporate some of the newer technologies?
Thank you.
If I, if I could, just to connect some dots. So later on today in the Agenda 3.4, you'll see that we have an item for UPS, the Uninterruptible Power Supply. That is a battery, and that battery goes on as soon as the power goes out and bridges the time until the generators can come on. So the generators are the standard way that we provide backup power. In certain cases, like with dispatch and with, with a network operations center, we can't live through that time period, and so we have a battery that bridges that time.
I appreciate that. And then I noticed that you were investing the same, in the sewer systems. We didn't want those backed up too. So thank you.
Yes.
I, I also wanted to ask, I know that, that, thank you very much. I, I want to ask about, about the airport. I'm super happy that they were well above target and, and $3.1 million above expectations. Are they too building up a rainy day fund? Because I, I, you know, when I first came into office, we were looking at having a lot of problems paying off bond debts when I first came in, and I'm so happy we're discussing excess funds. And, and I know that we may be going out to do a bond, to do the extension of the airport.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember John Aiken, Director of Aviation. We do have rainy day funds, and we have cash on hand over 500 days. So we are, we are prepared for downturns with, with money that is unrestricted within our budget.
All right, so this 3.1, is it unrestricted, or is it restricted, that they were discussing as that you made above expectations on your revenues?
I'm not sure about that exact 300, or 3.1 million, but we do have cash reserves set aside, and we do have cash on hand that's well over 500 days.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm super happy that we're paying down the golf courses, but this is something we've been talking about for many years. Why couldn't we squeeze out more than 2.3 million to pay down? How much debt is left on that golf, on at least Los Lagos?
With this action here, there will be about approximately $12 million, approximately left.
$12 million left?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and, okay. And but, but you didn't think that we can push that 2.3 million any further?
Yeah, we wanted to be consistent with the approach that we've kind of taken over the course of budget year, which is to chip away at it. You know, I mean, you could always just kind of take all the one-time money you had and kind of put aside the other issues that the city is facing and, and pay more of it down. But, but this is kind of that consistent shipping away approach, where we can take a little bit of the one-time dollars and pay that down. So just, this, this seemed to be an appropriate amount, given where we're at as a city and the resources that we had.
Yeah, well, this, this debt actually, it's, it's more important for, at least, in my opinion, more important to pay down because it actually limits the people who can actually bid on contracts for that. And then, and if, and I'm sure you, you remember that nobody bid to manage the, this, these facilities because of all these requirements and the bonded indebtedness. And that's why I'm, I'm more inclined to pay down bond debts from these, because they have other requirements in their, in, for those bonds. And so I'm hoping that we could find more money, maybe in the mid-year or something, to pay down more of that debt.
Well, this is that, when, when we look at paying down debt, this is our kind of, our primary focus is for those reasons that you cited, that we're always going to be keeping our eye on this as we move forward, for sure.
Thank you. And I'm really happy to see that we're moving from the, the $700,000 to 2.2 million for rent stabilization. This is something that, you know, former Councilmember Don Rocha and I wanted to make happen, and we, I think it's the best way to keep people out of losing their homes. So thank you for that. There's 1.8 million dedicated for street safety maintenance on, on page IV-96. Is that going to be somehow divided by district, or how's that going to be first come, first served? What's the, what's, how's that 1.8 million going to be dedicated, if you will?
I'm wondering if someone from Transportation Department can come in and address that question.
All right. Maybe I'll get my answer offline. Nobody's jumping to the table.
What, what, I, I think so this is, so I think this will be really allocated out really as part of, as I'm rereading this, a reserve that will be budgeted out as part of the, the proposed capital budget process going forward through next year. So setting aside those monies that came in above the estimates for construction excise, making sure that those are then prioritized and spent from that reserve into live appropriations as part of the next budget process, or some mid-year process.
Okay. We got John here. Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, councilmember. Could you repeat that question for, real quick?
It just showed that there's another $1.8 million. It just showed that there's another 1.8 million dollars for street safety projects on page IV-96. 96.
The reference to the 1.78 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it was in the mayor's budget message that is realigning some of those funds into future traffic safety projects within council districts?
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, again, I'm always happy to be talking about exceeding our goals in revenues rather than having a budget deficit. I've been lucky to be at city council every year where we were talking about more than we expected rather than less than we expected and it's through some of the great work that you guys do to keep us solvent and in the, out of debt. I appreciate that. I will make a motion to accept the report from staff and the recommendations going forth.
Motion in second, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to you and your team for the presentation today and the really well-defined book that I received. And I did read it cover to cover. Thank you very much. This is my first year having to go through this whole budget process from the beginning and this cleanup budget. And I really appreciate how well it was laid out and the information that was laid out for me too. I do have just one or two questions, but a couple of highlights that I'd like to point out that you've already mentioned, but I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the increase in funding for the IT department and things that we're able to do there, particularly the efficiencies that will be, you'll be able to create with increased technology and managing from the planning department up through PRNS and enabling us to get better reports and more detailed reports and handle that data better. Also, my staff is very anxiously awaiting the new release of the website. So hiring more staff to get that done will be fabulous as every day we get a question or a comment about our personal website and we keep deferring it. But your team is, the IT team, particularly Matt, is doing an excellent job in working with us. Also, public safety. It's tremendous that we are contributing even more to public safety and the things that we need to be aware of and protecting our residents in particular, the additional funds to the 311 and 911 systems. Based on the results of the audit, we know that, done earlier this year, we know that we have areas that we're working on and those additional funds will really help bring staffing up and create some efficiencies. So I was happy to see the additional funds there and additional FTEs. And unfortunately, we have to have additional funds for the Guardian Rapid Response Program. But it's a necessary adjustment to allow PD to respond to those situ, active shooter situations and anticipate them. So I was glad to see the additional money. Like the mayor and councilmember Camus, and I'm sure others who will weigh in on this, I really believe in paying down debt as well. It's important to get rid of our debt, our burden, our burdensome debt as much and quickly as possible. I'm personally, I like to get rid of my debt as soon as I can. But I understand the step, stepping down approach and how we're doing that with Los Lagos as well. Lagos, sorry. Lagos is somebody else's, I think. Anyway, the idea of paying that debt down and eliminating any outstanding obligations like that is really helpful as eventually it will put more money back into the general fund and reduce our debt load. And then we want to make sure that we continue to focus on quality of life in our neighborhoods. And I appreciate the additional funding that we're managing for homeless concerns in addressing our unhoused population and how we can help out the unhoused population. And I hope that the county and adjoining cities will also step up in a bigger way and help with the homeless population. I really only had one question and it's probably a newbie question. There's a reference to carryover encumbrances. Can you tell me what those are?
So that is money that is, that was, let's say in 1819, we opened up a PO or executed a contract for, let's say, a million dollars. And we, so we encumbered that, so all that million dollars became restricted for that vendor. And so when that encumbrance crosses the fiscal year, so that money is still encumbered, maybe we didn't spend all of that money. So we carry over the remaining balance of that encumbrance into the following fiscal year. So that's, so an encumbrance that we have in 1920 that was first encumbered in 1819 is a carryover in encumbrance. We go through the process every so often to, or every year to look at, okay, there are some carryover encumbrances that we probably don't need anymore and let's liquidate those. And we always assume a certain amount of that as part of the proposed budget process. And I think we normally around 2 and 2.5 million. And it ended up being finally at 3.2 this year.
So that would be my follow-up question. Once you determine that the carryover encumbrance isn't needed anymore, you remove the item and put the funds back into the general fund?
Yes, we call that, we would liquidate the encumbrance and that encumbrance then falls to fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have. I really appreciate the report. It's very helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I also want to add my thanks, Jim, to you and your team for always putting together a conservative budget and for the very detailed report that we get. I have one question. I know it's my third year and I should probably know the answer to this already, but the budget stabilization reserve versus the contingency reserve, what are those earmarked for?
So the contingency reserve is there kind of in the worst-case scenario. We have no cash coming into the city. Something really bad has happened. We hope to never touch that contingency reserve. The budget stabilization is kind of more viewed like a rainy, a rainy day fund. So that, when we do hit the next economic downturn, we will use that reserve to help bridge the gap if the deficit is too big for us to solve in one year. That was a strategy we employed during the last recession. We kind of had to, we drained that budget stabilization reserve fund and then built it back up again. And we also, if things got really bad, let's say in the middle of a year, we could tap that budget stabilization reserve fund without having to cut services in the middle of the year. If we felt good enough that, hey, if we tap that budget stabilization a little bit right now, we feel like we would be okay the next year with some other minor tweaks. So it's, the budget stabilization is aimed to be used and the contingency reserve is like the worst-case scenario.
Okay, and if I read the report correctly, the contingency reserve would only cover general fund payroll for two weeks?
For about two weeks. It's not, it's not a big reserve, yeah.
What's our, what's, I know the minimum goal is 3%. I think I read that in there. What would you recommend for that reserve? What's best practice there?
You know, so the overall council policy is 10%, for all of our general purpose reserves, which would be the sum of the contingency, the stabilization, and the catastrophic claims workers' compensation liability. So the city council policy has a target of 10%. When the auditor's office did an audit on reserves, they recommended, you know, the upper end, a target of 16% for that total combined. I don't have a number for what it should be for operations contingency. It, you know, probably should be a little higher. But our stated reserve targets are 10% for all of our general purpose reserves with an ideal target of 16%.
Okay, thank you. And we would, assuming it was before whatever the emergency was that led us to tap into the contingency reserve, if we had budget stabilization, we would also use that. Am I right?
Right, we would use that first.
Okay, we would use that first. Okay, great. Thank you. That's very helpful. The only other question I had is about the fire training center amount, the 36.8 million. Is that enough to cover the whole relocation in the building? And that may not be a question for you. It might be a question for Public Works or for Dave. But is that cover the whole cost?
Thank you, Matt Kena, Director of Public Works. No, that likely won't be enough to build the fire training center that we want to build for the future of San Jose. So we're going to be coming forward to council sometime in the next two to three months in partnership with the Fire Department and other city departments to make a recommendation. And what we want to do is make sure we're not just replacing what we had, but also building what we need for the future. So to build what we need for the future, which is going to be bigger than we currently have and more and better than we currently have, will require more than the money we, that you just mentioned. And so we're putting together a plan to achieve that. And we'll be coming back to council in the next two to three months.
Okay, and where will those funds come from? Will it come from Measure T? Do we set aside money for that? I don't remember.
So there's two other areas that we're looking at right now. One is we received a $3 million grant from the state of California that I think some of you were involved in helping us get for a fire as well as another 3 million for the emergency, roughly 3 million for the Emergency Operations Center. And we're also looking at our Central Service Yard Fund, one of our capital funds, and whether there's any financing that we can do with those capital revenues in order to get upfront money to help build the project. And so those are the sources we're looking at. And we'll be back with the recommendation in the near future.
So we will not use Measure T dollars for the relocation? Is that correct?
We could, it's possible we could use Measure T dollars, although the public safety commitments in Measure T are pretty extensive that we're trying to deliver right now outside of Fire Training Center. So I don't currently anticipate there's going to be anything extra to go around in Measure T for this project. But it is on the list of funds we're looking at as possibilities. But as of right now, we're trying not to use Measure T funds.
Okay, that's helpful. And do we anticipate, I don't know if you have an estimate yet. I know you're working on it and you said you'll come back to us. But do we anticipate that the cost of the relocation in the new training center will exceed the amount that we sold that site for?
The, I anticipate the cost of building what we need for the future of San Jose, which is bigger and better than we currently have, will be higher. But it is, would be an expanded scope from what we currently have.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so I think the approach that we've taken and really the benchmark is that we wanted to be sure that we could replace the existing facility for what we were receiving through the land deal. And so, so far that is, you know, true. We are looking at what we can do in terms of enhancing what we currently have. And I think many of you have been out there and understand why we're trying to do that. And so it's really trying to match up kind of that enhanced scope with the funds that we have available to us. But we're still meeting that initial threshold of being able to replace the existing facility for really what we were able to get out of the land deal.
And remind me, Dave, what that amount was?
I'll need some help on that. What, what was that number?
Was it 42? I was thinking 42 as well.
I think it's 41, but we'll have to get back and verify that.
So I guess I just, I'm not clear why we didn't put away the whole 41.
So if I could just clarify, so the 41, getting the full 41 is contingent upon us meeting a couple of benchmarks in the progress of the design of the facility. So we had the 38 million, sorry, the 37 million. Once we meet some more benchmarks, we will get the full 41 million dollars. We just don't have that yet. But as part, as part of the purchase and sale agreement, we will get that full 41 million as, as the design of the new facility proceeds and we exit the.
Oh, so we haven't received all the, all the sale proceeds?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's very helpful. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Hey, Councilmember Sparsa?
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. I wanted to thank staff for all their hard work on this and really comment on the 1.5 million on the community plan and homelessness as well as the quality of life in healthy neighborhoods. I just wanted to comment that I am looking forward to the city manager's plan as we roll out some of these neighborhood, increased neighborhood services into pilot and impacted areas. So as we move forward with that funding. And I also wanted to thank staff for allocating 2.3 million to the Los Lagos Golf Course, since it's a golf course that has been borrowed against to fund so many other projects in the city. So thank you very much.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you all. We have a motion. We do not have any cards from the public on this item? No. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes. Thank you. The budget work for the year is done. Now we start today on the mid-year. Thank you. All right, item 3.4, actions related to replacing the Uninterruptible Power Supply for city network operations. There's not a presentation on this item? All right. Is there any questions? Let's vote. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Michael Blumquist, or Blomquist, forgive me, Michael.
Thank you for the time. This is sort of loosely related to this item, but I'm not certain if I should thank you or not or if the press was accurate in the recent story about the investigation into local, more local control over electricity services. But I've been here before and spoke on behalf of the merger with San Jose Water, or SJW Group and Connecticut Water Services. And the CPUC is broken. We've been, I personally am a party to that. The city is a party to that. And Rates, I'm also a member with Rates, that's been a party to that. And the whole proceeding surrounding that's been a sham. There's been no protections in place for the city or for your constituents who have San Jose Water as their water provider. And so I'm just anticipating similar types of issues with PG&E. And I think here in Silicon Valley, it would be something that you could reach out to a lot of the executives around. He would probably provide free services to help investigate that. There's a lot of case law that's out there. Monterey, Felton, and some other places that have taken over investor-owned utilities and both on the water side and I think even on some electrical. And I'd be happy to speak with staff or council or anybody to show some of the case law and the stuff that I've found and some of the arguments that have been made with the Public Utility Commission. But something's not right up there and they're not regulating these utilities and it's just going to get worse. So I appreciate your investigation into that and I really encourage you to continue with that investigation. So that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just had one question on this item. Matt, I appreciate the email you sent me. I just wanted to follow up on that email, or Walter, whoever. In the email, in response to my question about what exactly we're buying here, it's clearly a battery as Dave described. And I guess it's continually charging battery that then we can draw down. And you described a seven-minute period of time, or is it seven-second? I'm sorry. Seven-second period of time. That's critical between one system shutting down the other, jumping into place. Is this battery just for those seven seconds? Or is there actually some significant duration that we could expect?
Walter is going to give the best detail there.
Yes, a good question, Mayor Liccardo. Walter Lynn, Deputy Director of Public Works. So that is one of the more critical functions of what the UPS will serve. If there is a detection of a PG&E outage, the UPS is going to bridge that gap of time, that's seven seconds, between when the emergency generator would be initiated. As it is right now, we cannot maintain very much of that infrastructure. So whether it's the current UPS, the main switchgear, which is the main circuit breaker that powers the NOC as well, because we cannot shut down anything, we cannot preventive, provide any preventive maintenance or corrective maintenance. So having a new system as well as a redundant system that allows us to switch back and forth and do actually the preventive maintenance. For the last 14 years, unfortunately, we have not been able to do very much maintenance on the system, which then would affect reliability.
So I understand that this is really a bridge to get us to the generator fundamentally, right? And my concern, I know it's, your concern too, is in a world of an extended shutdown, the uncertainty of fuel supply getting to where we need it to get to, how long those generators will be able to keep operating. And I'm just wondering, can this battery be used for any extended? And I'm just wondering, can this battery be used for any extended period of time, any duration beyond?
So with the system as it's set up currently, the existing UPS can last us 22 minutes. The new UPS, as well as the redundant UPS, that'll double the time, so we're at about 40 to 45 minutes. So fortunately, it's not sustainable. We do have to rely still on the emergency generator. The emergency generator will last us 17 hours with its current fuel supply, and obviously with City Hall, we'll treat this as a critical facility for refueling needs. In the event in which the main generator actually fails, this project also allows us to incorporate some electrical connections where a secondary generator can be brought in. That is something that we bring in independently to hook up just specifically to supply the NOC, the Network Operations Center, with power. So we are looking at almost a triple redundancy in case of need. We are not building in that secondary emergency generator into this budget. That's something that we just bring along separately.
Okay, and as you considered various options, and this is sort of a standard chemical battery, I'm sure you considered other options. I'm just thinking, for example, about BloomBox, for example, that seems to provide energy for extended duration. What made you choose this over the other technologies that are out there?
I think the technology, it's keeping like-for-like, just matching what we currently have. We are, we are familiar with the other type of technologies, while the BloomBox technologies, the fuel cells, things of that nature. Depending on the fuel source, we are looking at how do we balance that with other city policies, in particular, the zero-nick carbon scenario, where many of the fuel cells are natural gas-based. We're also thinking of the concept that if there's a major earthquake and gas lines are also affected, that particular fuel source may be, maybe truncated as well. So we're looking at what options we have for current technology, ease of refueling, what's available currently.
Okay. And I appreciate the concerns, certainly about the availability of natural gas as well, and I mean, it's a challenge to have enough redundancy out there. I just wonder if what we're ultimately doing is relying on generators. We don't really have a great zero-energy solution at the end of the day, anyway. So, you know, I'm willing to compromise if it gets us something more reliable, but anyway, thanks, Walter. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions? Okay, we're on to, thank you, gentlemen, on to item 3.5, which are actions related to the agreements between the city of San Jose and Eastside Union School District and Smartwave Technologies for Community Wireless Network. Welcome, Dolan and team.
Thank you. Well, the teams come in.
Welcome to our partners at Eastside as well.
There we go.
All right, we're now on 3.5. We skipped 3.4. So, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public and city staff. Dolan Beckel, Director of the Office of Civic Innovation here, joined in the front box by smart city manager Regine Eyre, Al Brown from Smartwave, and Chief Technology Officer Randy Phelps from the Eastside Union High School District. We're here to provide a short presentation on item 3.5, which is a lot of words to say that the district-city partnership recommends moving forward to deploy free Wi-Fi at home for the students, teachers, and the general public in the Overfelt High School coverage area. This project has been in process for over three years. I'm going to provide a brief background for the public and for the new council members. So approximately, on the why, approximately 30% of the students in East San Jose do not have internet access at home. In terms of the what, the Eastside Union High School District passed a 2014 technology bond to increase student access to computers and modern technology, including allocating $2.7 million to close the homework gap. This was a very innovative bond initiative, which was able to include both the capital and the operating expenses. In terms of the how, the district partnered with the city to pilot free outdoor Wi-Fi access to students and non-student households in the three lowest-income high school attendance areas, those being James Lick, Overfelt, and Yerba Buena, to help close the homework gap. The city approved the deployment of Access Eastside in James Lick High School attendance area, and directed the city manager to assess the James Lick project, to report back on funding and project performance to council before proceeding with Overfelt and Yerba Buena, and that's why we're here. So in terms of the timeline, go back in the wayback machine to 2014, when the district approved the technology bond. In 2016, the city approved agreements with the district and Smartwave for Overfelt. After a challenging deployment period, we deployed the Access Eastside, as it's now called, for James Lick students and teachers only in 2017. At the recommendation of the Smart City Committee, we spent over a year doing an assessment on both the technical performance and educational performance. Upon successful completion, we activated Access Eastside at James Lick for the non-student households in 2019. That brings us to RED today, seeking approval of the recommendation to execute amendments to bring the Overfelt Wi-Fi online before the start of the school year for student and non-student households. We expect to have that done. Current schedule of the recommendation is passed today by July of 2020, and then we'll move on to the final project that was in the original scope from 2016, the Yerba Buena High School area. Now to present a brief, high-level overview of the project deployment itself, I'll turn the presentation over to Regine, who was also the project manager for this project back before she came to the Office of Civic Innovation.
Thank you, Dolan. Regine Eyre, Smart City Manager, Civic Innovation Team. So at the time, this project was a first of its time. It took quite a collaborative effort between three entities, and so it started off with the Eastside Union High School District, which provided the capital funding to purchase the equipment, in addition to providing the funding for the permitting fees. And then, once the project was completed, it covered for the operation and maintenance costs. Within the city of San Jose, it was quite a collaborative effort within the departments of the organization. So I do want to say great thanks to Public Works, Department of Transportation, Library, Information Technology, Finance, Budget Office, and also Civic Innovation. So with that, what the city offered was the actual assets, so particularly our streetlights, our back hall, and our power. Also, our city staff, part of the permitting fees, essentially helped the district in order to design and provide construction support. There was a tremendous amount of leadership support and other in-kind contributions to keep this project moving forward. And then the library department, in addition with the Eastside Union High School District, collaborated on establishing educational outcomes and digital literacy. But none of this could not happen without the true support of the implementation with Smartwave Technologies, Rosinin Electric, Cupertino Electric, and PG&E. And then with the technical evaluation, you can see it's a village, the technical evaluation is the Silicon Valley Talent Partnership and PayPal. They were tremendous in helping that out. So with that, I'd like to turn it back to Dolan.
Thanks, Regine. So in terms of the assessment that we were asked to come back to council with, I'm going to go through this quickly. We're going to, if you don't believe us, you can believe the actual users, the students and teachers, so we've got a short, two-minute testimonial, and then we're going to turn it over to Randy to talk about the district's perspective. So from the customer satisfaction, the customer, either being the end user or the district who's paying, they're very satisfied, and Randy will elaborate on that. In terms of the student and teacher usage, it's currently over 1.5 terabytes per month, where as a reference, a terabyte is 200,000 books. So every month, the students and teachers are basically downloading the equivalent of 300,000 books to help their educational assessment. In terms of the public usage, it's over five terabytes per month, and that equates to five times the downtown Wi-Fi, the convention Wi-Fi, and the airport Wi-Fi combined. So it's being heavily used by the public in the James Lick area. From a technology solution, we've looked at many technology solutions several times, and the current mesh network is performing well, provides a cost-effective means for connectivity, resiliency, and reliability. It was, since November 2017, it was available at 99.4% reliability, which, in the world of 2,000 trailing nines, may not sound reliable, but for this type of network, the folks at PayPal said it was an extraordinarily high degree of reliability, so that basically the technical network is sound. From the educational benchmarks, obviously, this is going to be an evaluation over time, but the district and the city and the library have agreed on a set of educational benchmarks we know how to measure and we can measure, and we'll be doing that over time at James Lick, and comparing them to Overfelt, and eventually Yerba Buena. The student and teacher satisfaction, the actual users, is very high. The students and teachers talk about further engagement on email after high school, after school hours, excuse me, and now we're going to tee up a video that the students and teachers at James Lick created to show how happy they are with this.
Before, I wasn't able to look at my assignments, like my homework, and I had a big issue with that.
I'm Natalie, and I'm in 10th grade, trying to finish my homework, even though I didn't have a computer, or sometimes my phone didn't have the internet able to do it.
Now that I have it, it allows me to look at assignments from other classes, and we use this thing called Flip for math. If we ever have an issue on a problem for math, we can just look at a video.
My name is Nicole Martinez, and I'm a 9th grader. I think it really has like a good impact, because there are people that don't have smartphones or internet, and I feel like it just helps them out.
I am Dorothy Atkinson, and I am an integrated Math II and Math III teacher at James Lick. So far, in the classroom community wireless has been awesome, because I actually started recording homework videos, homework help videos, because a lot of students would say, "I don't know how to do this, my parents don't know how to do this." They're able to go home, watch the videos, and get that homework help individually from me, and then they're more able to get the homework done. So the community wireless has actually been really great, because the students have been able to message me through Remind late at night and say, "Hey, Miss A, like, my grade doesn't have this in it, but I thought I turned it in." And so I'm able to respond. And so the community wireless is able to give them access to apps and that technology, which helps their grade. From a teacher's standpoint, I've definitely noticed a change in my classroom, because I'm getting more students who are turning in homework, and I've had an improvement in actual questions because of those homework videos. So they're able to kind of reflect on what I'm saying in the homework videos at home, kind of process it, and come back and be able to ask me better questions.
Yeah, I would recommend it. It's really helpful, so like, I use it all the time.
Yeah, definitely, because some kids don't have access to phones or computers, and that would be good for them.
I think it's good, because some kids don't really get to have this experience. So like, it's nice that you guys are giving it to us.
Okay, so before I turn it over to Randy, if we can go back to the PowerPoint presentation, the last item that council requested to come back on before we move forward was the funding. So for the benefit of council members who are new, this project was originally passed by the council with a funding gap. There still is a funding gap. There's approximately $1.4 million in funding gap for the Yerba Buena installation and ongoing operations. We're actively working on options to fund that gap, whether they be some applying for grants, whether it be the community Wi-Fi, which we're coming with some options and recommendations to the committee on November 7th to get feedback, or potentially there's some opportunity with the Alum Rock School District, because once Overfelt is implemented, the combination of James Lick and Overfelt pretty much is a good overlap with Alum Rock, and they have expressed interest in the past of joining, both from a technical perspective and a funding contribution perspective. So, so having said that, that kind of concludes the assessment we were asked to come back with, and I'm going to turn it over to District Chief Technology Officer Randy Phelps for his perspective.
Hi, Randy Phelps, Chief Technology Officer. First, I just want to thank the mayor and the council for all the help and the support on this project. It's a very complex project, and also our thanks to Dolan and his team. They've been absolutely awesome. Al Brown to my right has been a fantastic vendor to work with. Overall, I mean, what's been nice is we've developed some great relationships. But the most important thing, and I smiled during the video, one thing I'd like to tell you is that video was produced entirely by kids, and I, the only instructions I sent them out with was go over to the school and just ask legitimately, like, "Is this a good thing? Are you guys getting a benefit from this?" And they said, "Well, how do we do it?" And I said, "Well, do you have anything on your phone, or you need a camera, whatever?" And then, of course, they had a phone with a camera, and they went out and put all that together, including the graphics, which they asked me for the program to put the graphics together, and I got it for them. So you saw a genuine article from, from kids. For us, this project, the superintendent and I have frequently said, "We want to do the whole district, we want to do the whole Eastside," and we're not getting younger. We're ready to go. I'll have, we'll have some additional funds coming through our tech bond, the way that we designed it, and we love the relationship, and we think this is one of those great things that cities and school districts can do together that really, really impact our entire community. We really love that the whole community's on, and along with our grant that we got from Sprint, we're able to supply for our kids. If they don't have a phone or a device to use, we supply those for them. So just realize that district-wide, we're supplying phones with data plans, but this is so much better than the data plan you get in the Sprint thing. Even the Sprint folks are like, "Do as much community wireless as you can, use the Sprint grant to supplant that." So those two together are really serving our kids well, and I just really want to express our gratitude to your support and your help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. So just to go for next steps before we conclude, obviously, we're hoping for approval of recommendation. This is not a negotiate and execute, it's execute, so all the, all the signatures are ready for go. We're just waiting for the council approval. We'll immediately begin with the Overfelt design to meet the school year with a target of late July 2020. It's fortunately the same staff in Public Works, so still the same staff in Public Works available, so we should be much more efficient at it this time. We'll be continuing to conduct the educational assessments and the reporting back through the education digital literacy strategy of the library, and then in parallel, we'll be pursuing those funding options, help close the funding gap for Yerba Buena, for both the installation and ongoing operations and maintenance. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dolan, and thanks, everyone. You know, I really think it's important, you know, it can't be understated, this is a really big deal. And I know this has been more than three years in the process, but, you know, we undertook this effort to figure out what the digital divide was in this city, and identified, we think, almost 100,000 people were on the wrong side of it, roughly 50,000 households. And just in James Lick alone, we're able to reach 6,000 of those households right in the core, the area we want to reach, and that is really because of this partnership. So I want to thank, say a big thank you to Randy and, and everybody at Eastside, Chris Funk and everyone who led that effort to pass e-bonds several years ago. And at the time, I don't think anyone, I think in California, had done it, if I'm not mistaken. It was a real leadership effort from the district, and it's a unique way of financing, and it's enabled all this to happen, and it's a great partnership. So thank you for, for what you guys have done in leading the way and finding the resources. And then Al Brown at Smartwave, I know this is not your first partnership with the city. There have been several, I think, including the Convention Center, is that right, among others?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you. I know it's, it's, it always takes more work, working with public agencies. We've got a lot more processes to get through and everything else, and I just really appreciate all that Smartwave has done to step up and provide this great benefit for the community. So thanks, Al. And then the entire team, certainly Dolan and Regine, and Rob Lloyd, and folks who are helping on finance, Julia and her team, and the budget, Jim Shannon, and Shreen Santosham on my team, and everybody's been working so hard. It's great to see this expand to Overfelt. We want to continue the momentum onto Yerba Buena. I know there's a funding gap, we knew that at the start, so I'd like to ask a little bit about the funding gap, and I suspect we'll delve into this in greater detail in the Smart City Committee, so several of us will hear more. But given the fact we've got public agencies involved, we've got students involved, does that constrain our ability to go to companies who might be interested in providing revenue, say, for example, through advertising, you know, with a splash page? I'm not suggesting it would be Juul, but perhaps it might be Snapple. Is there an opportunity for any private-public partnership here, or are we constrained in some way because of the nature of the audience being students?
I don't know if there's any constraints on, on the funding, and in fact, Mayor, it would be spoilers, I would actually, we wouldn't have a November 7th Smart City Committee if I told you what we're going to come present. But we do have, we do have a form of a public-private.
You're killing me, Dolan.
We do have a form of a We do have a form of a public-private partnership and a value trade that we think gives us a path forward.
Okay.
And I think those, there are other options to pursue as well. So I think historically, we actually haven't spent, we spent more time executing than looking for the funding gap. Now that we're here with Overfelt, we're pivoting more to how do we get that funding gap closed, and I think all options are on the table.
Great, I appreciate that. And I know executing wasn't easy, and this is the first time any of us have tried this, and so I'm grateful that we've got that experience now behind us, and I think it'll go a lot faster. Great to see five terabytes of data are moving through the Wi-Fi system. And I know in the report, staff report makes mention to educational websites, they're actually providing some content, that's a good thing. How do we know what share of that five terabytes is coming from Fortnite as opposed to, I don't know, their civics lesson?
We, the networks are separate. So for, on the public side, that's Rob's side of the house, and so he uses the measures that the city uses to look at traffic. On our side, all of our students use their student identification data, we call it ARMS, and all of it's filtered, all of it goes through all the normal processes that we use at the district to make sure people are looking at things that are highly educational. And so we've done a pretty good look at that data, and we are very, very comfortable with what kids are doing on there. There's not as much fun on our network as there is on the public side. But the fact that we're moving so much data across there, when we compare it to the data that they're doing at school, it's commensurate, they're very much, the data shapes are pretty much the same.
That's great.
So we're confident that, two things. One, people need to have fun in an educational environment, it can't be all work and no play. And so we do leave some things available for kids, but...
Sure.
At the same time, what we're seeing is, when we see the spikes in behavior on the data network, it's during the prime homework times, it's all the things that we really want, in the middle of the night, it drops off like a rock, so people aren't up all night watching movies or anything like that, so...
Great.
We're very, very, very happy with the performance that the kids have done and that the network's done, too.
Good, well, thank you. I'm glad that we are monitoring to that extent and really understand it. And then finally, Randy, you made mention of Sprint devices, and I'm guessing it has to do with the announcement a couple of years ago...
One million.
...the Sprint million devices, yeah. I remember hearing that there were some challenges in implementation, where they had to take some devices back and all that. Do we still have those devices available, or are we still able to get them in kids' hands?
No, it worked, the process worked great. The original amount that we requested, we got, and we distributed those.
Okay.
We're actually in the second round, we, the first round of that grant ended, and the second round, we applied for and were successful and got, and it began this fall.
Oh, good.
So we're already in round two, and we, actually, next week, we're presenting for them about how to do it successfully.
Great.
So we feel absolutely fantastic about the 1 million project, and I think it's mutual. I think that they're very happy with how we've performed as well.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, this is an exciting project, and it shows really the power of partnership. The East Side Union High School District Board, who had the courage to put this on the ballot, I think it showed huge amount of courage and vision to do this when no one else was. I'm looking at a former board member right here. And to the East Side voters who also matched that vision and voted for it, and then to the city, to Dolan, for your team, for providing the support to the school district, and to the community to really realize the vision. I'm excited about Overfelt. I know Councilmember Arenas, who's not here today, would be thrilled. We share some constituents in Tropicana, Lanai, and the Valley Palms neighborhood who can really, really use this, and it's going to make a huge difference for them. I am disappointed, though, to see that YB lacks access due to the 1.6 million funding gap. And so my question is, have we considered the funds from the California Emerging Technologies Fund as a source or partial source for the funding gap? Because according to the staff report from, to the council meeting earlier this year, where we approved it, it said the Digital Inclusion Fund is anticipated to receive $32 million over 10 years in revenue, so it seems like a good opportunity for funding. So I'm not sure who would answer that, Dolan?
So multiple options for pursuing, certainly applying to the state is an option, and that's on the radar scope. Applying to the San Jose Digital Inclusion Fund is an option that's on the radar scope. The Housing Department has some funding that's expiring, that has some federal constraints around its usage, and we're pursuing that. And as the mayor said, there may be other opportunities for private sector partnerships. So we're actively pursuing all the above. So yes, there is an option with the California Emerging Technology Fund and the California Advanced Services Fund, and even a budget asked directly to the state, and all of those are on the table.
Yeah, I'm, obviously, I was the first council member to have an event about the Digital Inclusion Fund, I'm all in on that effort, but these schools are at the heart of the digital divide in our city. And many of us champion efforts with our tech companies locally to get kids internships, to prepare them for college, and really connect kids who live in the shadows of Silicon Valley, who don't think they live in Silicon Valley, to connect them to real Silicon Valley jobs. And so this is that important. And I would call, you know, on the team to apply to those funds, I offer my help. I just think this is so huge, we really need to treat it that way. And just to kind of put it into context, this funding gap is almost equal to one day's pay for the Google CEO who earned $1.2 million in 2018. So I would love to see our Silicon Valley partners come together to really get YB online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, one small detail, and the point is well made and well taken, Councilmember, but I think the amount we expect over 10 years from the fees is about $14 million?
Yeah, so to clarify, the San Jose Digital Inclusion Fund revenue is about $2 million a year over 10 years that would be available for grants.
Grants?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, okay. Good, good with the numbers. Okay. From the former board member of East Side is here, tell us more, Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you. That seems like such a long time ago. Thank you for the reminder. But Randy, it's so nice to see you again. When I was on the board, it was always an exciting time to come and have you speak because you were all so full of enthusiasm. But the only thing that really topped your enthusiasm was the faith that you had in our children, and the faith and belief that you had in making sure that we closed this digital divide. And of course, East Side Union High School District, although it spans half of the city, the good bulk of the students that really need the support and need all the assistance that we can figure out and we can mastermind, happen to live on the East Side. Yerba Buena is not exactly the East Side, but it's as close as East Side can be because we suffer from the same kinds of issues. When I was on the board, you know, and the idea came to us, when you brought the idea to us, it was, it was exciting, it was new, it was very innovative, it was very creative. We hadn't seen anything like this before, because this doesn't just address the infrastructure or software, but it addresses one of the most fundamental issues that we've always seen when we equip classrooms for teachers or for students, or even for myself when I buy a computer for my kids, is that within two years, the hardware is obsolete. And so you give kids an iPad or Chromebook or whatever it is, and it's 10 years old, it's just not compatible with how fast the world is moving in the world of technology, especially for this area. We should have top-of-the-line equipment and every possible opportunity to access those tools that are literally moving the world, and yet we see just entire communities being left behind for many reasons, but primarily because of poverty. And when I first came on council, I've mentioned this before because it's one of my favorite stories, Mayor, of you and me, was when we were, one of the first meetings on the East Side, and it was, it was, it was almost as if, you know, on cue, that family, I still remember that family coming in on a Saturday morning, unable to access the resources at the library. And so one of the real commonalities that we had in terms of the council at that time was making sure that all our resources were expanded and reopened, libraries being one of them, because at that time, this wasn't up and running, so we knew that students depended so highly on getting into that library so that they could finish their homework, so that they could do research, or simply expand their skills and read more, or access the world through that monitor, just like so many other children do who have those opportunities. And so this is, this is, this is exciting. I wouldn't have, never, I never would have thought in a million years, when we're working through this and getting it on the ballot and making sure that our voters voted for it, which they did thankfully, that now I'd be on this side, you know, at the city, working on the same issue in collaboration with, and watching how really wonderful, when partnerships do come together, as Councilmember Sparza mentioned, magic happens. And so there's an opportunity to level that playing field, especially for our students. And so if we're going to tell them that the ticket to the American dream, or the ticket to a better life, or ticket out of poverty is education, and then going on to college, and then getting a really great career, then we have to be able to provide those systems and that infrastructure that permits our students to be able to imagine and then work towards the goals that they set for themselves. We believe in them, you believe in them, and we need to make sure that they believe in themselves. But what a disappointment when the structure's not there. And so thank you so much for working so diligently. I do want to ask you, it's along the same lines as Councilmember Sparza, because I love Overfelt, it's, it happens to neighbor three critical communities in three different districts, District 5, District 7, District 8. But this, this is like the bulk of where our children of color, poverty resides, it's been generational poverty, lack of access, you know, nine miles from here to one of our wonderful, really Silicon Valley companies could be the same, could be the same as traveling from here to Italy or France. It's that far away for some of our kids. It's such a different universe to them, and so we need to make sure that we have everything in place. And it is also, that triangle there between 7, 5, and 8 is also home to, you know, some of the more challenging gang hotspots, also to, you know, lack of access even for our seniors. And so this really addresses a lot of the issues that a lot of us have been working on. Can I ask you, I know that sometimes things are slow, they move a little slower, maybe the way my speech is, but I'm just wondering, why, why were we able to pass it back in 2014 and are not ready to take on that second school until 2019, five years later? For some of these kids, they've already graduated from high school, and they're, and others are about to, so they'll be losing out on these opportunities. How do we hasten this step and make sure that we're catching these kids before the opportunities fall through their fingers?
Yeah, so I'll take that. It's largely structural. I think if we all look back at what we passed in council in 2016, we may have structured it differently. We were required to do the technical performance and the educational performance and a technology performance and come back, and that took longer than we anticipated, longer than we had planned. That's done. So the good thing is that's done, so what's between us and Yerba Buena is the funding. And so that took most of the time. We were asked to evaluate different technologies like LTE, like enterprise LTE, like light controllers that emit Wi-Fi, and we, it just took us some time to actually get that to a point that we were confident in the technology, and we also intuitively knew that the educational, you know, closing the homework gap was going to happen, but we were required in the council memo to actually establish a set of educational baseline metrics that we could measure and then start measuring them. And so some of it was dependent upon the library's work with the county to actually not only identify metrics, but then be able to actually attain those metrics and have useful data. So again, the good news is all of that's behind us, so now it really is, the funding is the only thing between us and Yerba Buena. I don't know if Randy has anything else to add, but that's it from the city side.
Okay, thank you. So then it really is about figuring out how to get that funding in as quickly as possible, and I know that that can take a while as well if we're applying for grants and waiting for the state to respond. So Mr. City Manager, is there anything that we could do and then possibly work on a reimbursement basis once grants, if they do come in?
Well, I think that sort of request, we need to kind of factor into the budget process. It does, like in listening to what Dolan was saying, is that he is coming forward with some ideas at the next Smart Cities meeting, so maybe you can kind of flush out some ideas there?
Yeah, happy to flush them out, and then happy to, based on those, have a couple of fallback plans and factor that into budget exercise.
Okay, great. Because I, and I, you know, I love that we're all on the same page on this one. The last thing I'll say is, I know that in the report, there was also mention of, one, that there's a high use, so we know that, and also that there's an improvement in academics. And so, surprise, surprise, right? Or I should say, there's really no surprise there. You give students, smart students, intelligent students, strong-willed students, resilient kids, the tools that they need, and they will be successful. And so I just want to thank you again. I want to thank you again. I want to thank you, Randy, for the work that you've done since the very beginning of this. It was exciting then, and it's exciting today to see that the results are what we, like you said, someone said intuitively, what we felt, you know? You build it, and they will come. It's not that we're digitally ignorant, it's just that we don't have digital access. And so this, this helps in the most wonderful ways to go ahead and close that gap. And so I really appreciate it on behalf of all the families that we've been all working for. And also, the idea of how this will contribute to the city of San Jose as a whole, because we can always pinpoint where our challenges are, but once we resolve those challenges, this only makes us a greater city that we could all be proud of. So thank you also, Mayor, for the commitment of your staff and the work that everybody has done. But again, I'm thrilled to see the result. I think it can only get better, especially for families that this is their first generation exposed to or have access to. Once become, once this becomes part of their culture and it's ingrained in our neighborhoods, there's no telling what can be done. Again, you shouldn't be confined by your zip code in terms of the access, especially in the wealthiest area of probably the entire country. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And another former school board member, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. As a 14-year school board member of San Jose Unified, I'm wondering, how do they get that over there, this over there? So I'm learning that the e-bonds were the trigger funding mechanism to enable this to happen in East Side Union High School District, and that's fabulous, that the board and the superintendent and staff had the vision there to bring it forward, and then that the community had the awareness and understanding of how important it is to have technology access for all the students in an area to help, so they can have the tools they need to be successful. To echo the words of Councilmember Sparza and Carrasco, the access to the tools is what helps make these students successful. There's no mystery to that. There's no mystery to that. But Eastside is not the only school district that needs help. That's not the only place our kids are struggling for access. So, what can we do? And I understand we have a $1.4 million deficit for this fund, but how do we partner, how do we work with other school districts to help eliminate the digital divide in their districts as well? Is there an opportunity there for us to use this, what Eastside has done, as a model for other school districts going forward? It seems like all the right partnership was in place. It's a fabulous, successful outcome of a partnership. But how do we enable all of our students to benefit from that?
That's a great, first, that's a great lead in to exactly what the plan was all along. You can see them laughing. So, I work very closely with a lot of the districts in the area, and through the County Office of Education, we meet pretty constantly, and everyone's been watching this project since, really, I can remember when it was candidate Licardo sitting around a large table, and I was talking about this idea, and he was going, "How would this work across the whole city?" And I said, "We want to build this model." And here we are. What's great is, all those districts have been watching and seeing how this developed, and they were like, "Once you get the roads paved, and once you get this figured out," they all want to be part of this, because they want to give the same benefit to their students and to their neighborhoods. And because we're a high school district, we have all the feeder districts that feed into us. With San Jose Unified, which I know extremely well, and I know it's close to Chris's heart as well, we see this as a model that, not just for San Jose, but that people could take what San Jose's doing on this front and on many fronts, and they could start adopting it. And that was part of our design process when Dolan and I first started working together on this. Our goal is that this is something that's replicable, that the feeders can work, and that it would be something that nationally people could start to see as a model. And we've learned a lot from this project, but not in the way people normally say that. This has mostly been, what's great is, when the humans really work together, you can really accomplish great things. The technology works pretty well, it's just a matter of putting it in place.
It's humans working together for the betterment of our children. And you could see in the video that they created how empowered they were. Thank you for making them, helping them to be empowered and to understand the power that they have now and the education that they have in the technology that you're allowing them access to. So, I think it's tremendously exciting. If you need any help with San Jose Unified, or my part of the district, the city, I'm happy to help. It's important that we close the achievement gap, and one of the ways we do that is by closing the digital divide. So, with that, I will move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, motion and lots of seconds. All right, any other comments or questions? Just on that last point, Councilmember Foley, you know, I remember when we were first pushing this initiative, we were using a statistic that 70% of kids in public schools were required to do their homework online. And I went back and tried to search for the source of that, because I was using it in a speech, and I realized that came from a 2009 New York Times article, which tells you, we're well past 70%. It's every kid. And so, this is a huge anvil over their, on their shoulders in terms of limiting their ability to achieve and have educational success and success beyond. So, being able to find a way to lift that is so critically important. Thank you.
I absolutely agree, and I would say it's not just high school students who benefit or who have to have access to technology to do their homework, it's elementary school and up.
Yeah. Okay, on the motion then. Let's vote. All right, it is unanimous. Thank you all. All right, at 3.6, our actions related to renewal of janitorial services with ABM Industries. There's no presentation. Is there a motion? Any comments or questions? All right, I don't have any. Oh, Councilmember Camus. Nope.
Sorry, pressed wrong button.
Okay, let's vote. All right, that's unanimous. Onto item 4.1, which is the California Building Standards Code adoption.
Mayor, before we begin, I must recuse myself on this item due to a conflict with my consultant, my campaign consultant.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Foley will accuse herself. I suppose under the rules, that means she'll have to step out, so if that's why she's gone, don't hold it against her. Okay. Okay, welcome, gentlemen. Hi, James. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. James, Deputy Director of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. I'm joined by Reggie Williams, Assistant Fire Chief, and Hector Estrada, Fire Marshal. We are here to ask the council for approval on the adoption of 2019 California Codes and Local Amendments regarding certain seismic design, fire sprinkler regulations, and other building requirements. The California Building Code, commonly known as Title 24, is updated by California Building Standards Commission every three years, based on 2018 International Building Code published by International Code Council. Local jurisdiction must adopt the California Building Standards for enforcement within 180 days of publication, and may amend the standards as necessary to address a local geological, topographical, and climatic conditions. 2019 codes are effective January 1, 2020. For this code cycle, we are looking at typical building and fire codes. However, for both green building standards and energy efficient standards have been adopted through the REACH Code ordinance. In addition to the code adoption, the proposed ordinance will update previously adopted amendments and to match current code language and cross-reference it, and also update the municipal code to reflect the 2019 codes. Building and fire staff work closely with other Bay Area jurisdictions by participating in the Tri-Chapter Code Committee and Santa Clara County Fire Group Committee as well, to ensure uniformity in application of these local amendments as best as possible. For this code cycle, there is no additional amendment to the 2019 building codes. However, staff is recommending four previously adopted building amendments, which are increasing seismic separation for essential and large assembly buildings, special inspection for isolated footings when concrete strength is greater than 2,500 pound-for-score inch, restricted use of gypsum and lead-embracing, and to limit the use of pollen, cement, plaster, and other non-structural materials that perform historically poorly during major seismic events. Now Hector will present the fire code amendments.
Thank you, James. Our recommendation to council is that we adopt the 2019 California Fire Code, to adopt the 2019 Fire Code standards for highly toxic and toxic gas with amendments which replace the toxic gas ordinance amended in 1778, as currently held, to retain and update local amendments to match the 2019 California Fire Code language and references. We also recommend to retain current amendments to firefighter breathing air replenishment systems, sprinkler system requirements, and those ordinances that are working for our community now, fire safety standards during construction specified in Ordinance 1782, and are largely a result of the Santana Row Fire. Recommended amendments we've included are covering 3D printing additive manufacturing. This provides clarity of code requirements distinguishing this from other similar processes. Lithium battery storage, to update the quantity of lithium battery storage allowable in a facility. Fire suppression detection and alarm systems are being brought to the 2019 NFPA standards. Plant extraction processing, which is in the California Fire Code, but are modified to bring into alignment with the San Jose Municipal Code 6.88. We're also defining wild and urban interface zones, the identify areas of responsibilities of San Jose and partner jurisdictions, such as CAL FIRE, for suppression vegetation management standards that allow us to enforce defensible space. And that concludes.
This concludes our presentation. Thank you. Great, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for all the work. I submitted a memorandum asking to support staff recommendations, but to come back and take a closer look at one of the particular elements of this code, and this has been subject of some discussion in past years, and folks have brought it to our attention in line of what they believe are equally safe or safer alternatives that may impose lesser costs on building. So, I've had some conversations with the Fire Chief, as well as with the head of our fire union, Sean Cowdor, and so, there seems to be a willingness for him to take a look at this with a fresh set of eyes, so I appreciate that. All right, any comments or questions? Councilmember Camus.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I actually remember this conversation taking place a while back, and do you think that there is a new technology out there that is more effective or more efficient?
And I'm certainly not the expert, but what I'm told is that fire-rated elevators, combined with different procedures, can provide the needed safety. That was the opinion of San Francisco when they ultimately removed the requirement from their code and allowed it to be, as an alternative, used the fire-rated elevators. But again, I'm not the expert, and I'd rather have the experts go find out and tell us.
Yeah, I remember this discussion, actually, but let me ask this, does the motion that you want us to make include eliminating the current rule to have?
No.
The FARs?
It would approve going forward, but simply ask staff to come back, and if what we learn is that there's a better way, then staff would then, or then council at that time would have an opportunity to vote to remove it from the code.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Councilmember Pross.
I'm just curious when staff thinks that we'll come back to discuss this.
Do you have any?
We've had a brief conversation. I think the Fire Chief's best to quit.
Very rough estimate, maybe three months to take a good look at it and look at what other agencies have determined, and if we do find an alternate solution, there are some disparities in the code relative to, for example, the example you provided, which is a fire-rated elevator, is required at a different structural level than the F bars product. So, we would have to potentially come up with an amended code recommendation as well.
Can I ask, was there a motion? Yep. No? I'll move it, but with the recommendation that this comes back to PIS-FIS then first for that discussion. So, if that's three months, then if we can get that on agenda there, and then put a recommendation to the council.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Pross, second from Councilmember Metis. Other questions? Councilmember Metis.
I just wanted to simply say, I appreciate your memo. I think it's, you know, certainly worth going and taking a look. I just wanted to point out something that stood out to me that I very much appreciate in the language that you provided, where it states, "The safety of firefighters and occupants shall be the primary and overriding consideration for any assessment." So, I just want to reiterate that, that I think that that should be the lens by which we evaluate this stuff, so very much appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? All right, let's vote then on Councilmember Pross's motion. Thank you, everybody. All right, we'll move on then to item 6.1, which is Design-Bill Contract for a parking garage at the airport. And John is here, there's no presentation, but I do have a question, John, sorry. There is a motion?
A second.
And a second, so motion from Councilmember Camus, second by Councilmember Pross. I'll tell you the question as you come down. Question number one, there are just two. One is, I understand we've got the electrical in place potentially to do panels out there, and I'm just wondering why we wouldn't pull the trigger to actually put solar? Is there an issue with interference with the lighting issues of landing or anything like that?
We're prepping the building to handle it. The ROI doesn't always prove out as far as putting up the panels and their life expectancy of generation and the cost. So, we're approaching that, hoping that there might be different panels, different, you know, life expectancies and stuff like that. Having the building prepped for it means that when that moment is right, right, when the panel life can get past its return on investment, then it becomes that right thing. At least the building's wired, we don't have to run new conduits and all of that stuff. It's all prepped for it. But I think solar in these scales still sometimes has issues with their ROI.
Okay.
So.
Now, I'm only familiar at a much smaller scale, so I take your word for it. It would be cheaper, I assume, to do with fresh construction than it would if we're retrofitting. Am I, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, it would be, and that's why we're putting in the conduits, because when you retrofit, then you have to like drill floors and run things vertically. That'll all be taken care of in this, so that add-on at the end is not as dramatic as, here's an existing building, now find a pathway for the cables to go.
So, at least the marginal additional costs should be relatively the same.
Right.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, I know that Hansel Phelps does a lot of good work for us, as they have in building the airport extension and...
Phase one.
As well as phase one, as well as convention center. I've heard some rumbling, and I suppose it's a reasonable concern from other contractors who might say, "Hey, why is Hansel Phelps getting all these contracts?" And obviously, I know you have a process, an RFP, and so forth. How do we respond to that concern that Hansel Phelps seems to be getting an awful lot of the contracts at the airport?
Yeah, I think part of it is, there has been a few construction projects that they haven't gotten, and I think that's part of the response. I think the other part is, knowing that that concern would be out there, you know, as soon as you see them bid and you know they've had work before, trying to make sure that the RFP process is as pure as possible. I mean, I had people from Public Works on the panel who'd never worked with HP before. We brought someone in from SFO who hadn't worked with them before. And so, there was, I had some of my staff on there, but I needed to, right, to really make sure that this project would move forward. But we tried to keep the panel equally pure and people that knew HP. And so, the voting went down, I reviewed it, there were two candidates that were very close at the top, and the logic made sense to me. And the panel members that didn't have familiarity with HP were right there saying, "No, that's the person to award to."
If I could just also add in, on phase one, Hansel Phelps was not the number one.
That's true.
It was Bechtel. We were unsuccessful in reaching agreement with Bechtel and went to the number two, which is Hansel Phelps.
Yeah, that's a good 10-year history lesson, thank you. I had forgot that for a second.
And it turned out all right. Okay, that's great. Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, and John, I actually want to, first of all, thank you and your staff for answering a lot of our questions about this project ahead of time, but since you're up here, I might as well, I might as well just ask you one additional question. Let me add is, looking at your monthly activity reports, we're seeing that even though you're at capacity for a lot of your lots, that overall parking is actually going down if you factor in the hourly exits. And if you look at the growth of the TNCs, year-over-year, you have a growth of 23.1%. I'm looking at the August report.
Right.
And so, my question to you is, we're going to spend the money for this parking garage. Did you do any kind of analysis in terms of an inflection point in terms of the growth in TNCs and the usage of TNCs, and the usage, or the projected uses of the parking garage?
We had this conversation a little bit when we came and got the design-build permission for this and the permission to put out the RFP, and since that time, I've asked staff to dig into this, because council had asked me to, you know, is this the right, scale it to the right size. The parking exits are down, actually, because there's less short-term spots, because the new interim facility wiped out 600 spots. So, if I have less spots, I have to have less entrance and less exits, because there's less to occupy it. The Saturday before Columbus Day, which is normally not a big holiday weekend, we ran out of parking period for almost seven hours. We were shut down with no parking available for seven straight hours. The following Saturday, which was not even a holiday weekend, every lot filled up, just not all of them at that same moment in time. And so, we're getting to the point where, and we had talked about this a little bit, TNCs made a huge impact on parking four, five years ago, and we've started to recover from that, especially since more passengers are flying. That same, even if the TNCs were at that same percentage, we're grabbing 20% of your passengers and they're using TNCs as that passenger number grows. passengers and they're using TNCs as that passenger number grows, there's still a bigger demand for parking. Right now, we are looking to move 1,100 employees out of the Terminal A garage and moving them over, back over to the West Side, to Martin Avenue, because we don't have enough parking for our passengers, which is our main business, right? I mean, employee parking is great, and have it convenient is great, but I want our passengers to have a great experience and great parking. And so we're emptying out 1,100 spaces in the Terminal A garage so that we can come through and be able to have that opportunity to not have, I mean, if I close for seven hours on Columbus Day, what's going to happen in Thanksgiving here in less than a month? What's going to happen to us? And then you go right into Christmas, and all of a sudden, I'm at 16 million passengers by May. I think this is the right time. I've really kind of, it's a lot of money. It's $48 million. So I've really thought about this with staff, and I'm really comfortable telling you, this is the right time. This lot will get used. I think this will bridge past TNCs and helicopter TNCs and whatever else is out there. I think this 900 spaces is the right number for us right now to move forward.
Great. Thank you, John.
Okay.
John, not to let you get away too soon.
Since I'm up here.
But since you're up here. I know this, I agree with you, this is the right decision for the medium term. In the longer term, I'm guessing this parking won't be well utilized eventually. And are we building in the design adaptability for this to become office or other kinds of uses?
In this garage, we looked at that, and I don't think it's the right thing based on its location. It's very remote out on the Long Term Island, that kind of Guadalupe River 10187 island. When we come back to talk about a, in the terminal area garage, I think you're exactly right. Make the floors flat, make it taller, so it can convert to an office complex or something over time as the uses change. I don't think this one is in the right location for that kind of convertibility. And I think, when we talk about the ROI on this, 900 spaces, $15, $18 a day, $48 million, I think we did that calculation last time, and it was in that seven-to-10-year range. I think that this TNC changeover to autonomous cars and all those different opportunities, it's not going to be the mainstay of transportation until after that seven-to-10 years. And so I think the building will be paid for. I think there'll still be uses for it. I think there'll still be people in our larger, our larger catchment areas, Santa Cruz, Monterey, that aren't going to Uber it up from Santa Cruz and Monterey, that are going to use this opportunity, so.
Right. Yeah, fair points. And look, I don't pretend to know what exactly the demand's going to be, but with the slanted, the smoked, yeah, plates and so forth, recognize it may be too remote for office, but I think about, for example, industrial users, warehouse users, who really want to have access to get cargo on a plane or something like that. I know we're not a big cargo airport, but is it conceivable the structure can be at least altered for that kind of use?
Well, again, it's design-build, so I can put that out as a task to explore to a certain degree, to a certain level of understanding. That's the beauty of design-build, right? It's not designed yet. And so I can put that as a task to explore to a point where we're comfortable saying, it's not worth the extra blank dollars to do that, and then proceed with what I feel is the best cost-for-garage kind of calculation.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you, John. All right. Other questions or comments? All right, on the motion, to allow John to go home. All right. That passes. Thank you. And we're building more at the airport. Here we go. Onto 7.1, which relates to Lori and team are coming to talk to us about the California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project.
I'm Lori Mitchell, and I'm the Director of Community Energy. And today, I'm joined by Zach Strike. He's our Deputy Director of Account Management, Marketing, and Communication. And Kevin Meehan, our Fuse Executive Advisor and Programs Lead. Kevin has really been leading this effort for us, and he will walk us through the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and councilmembers. My name is Kevin Meehan, and I'm the Fuse Executive Advisor and Programs Lead for the Community Energy Department. I'm excited to present to you today the background and implications of the Cal EVIP project. As our colleagues in Environmental Services have previously reported in their Climate Smart Plan updates, San Jose's greatest source of emissions is increasingly coming from the transportation sector and now stands at 62.8% based off of the 2017 greenhouse gas The Climate Smart Plan has set ambitious emissions reduction targets through the increased adoption of electric vehicles for the passenger vehicle segment, as this graphic shows from the plan. I wanted to first provide a brief introduction on the different type of chargers that are available in the market. In the market, there are typically three types of chargers. Level-one charging can be accessed through any basic 120-volt outlet, but normally takes a much longer time to fully charge the vehicle. Level-two charging requires a specific 240-volt outlet and decreases charge times anywhere from three to eight hours, depending upon the electric vehicle. Fast charge, or normally called DC fast charging, is the fastest charging available in the market. These stations are normally installed at corridors such as highways, gas stations, airports, and normally can charge a vehicle in 30 to 60 minutes. To give an introduction on the Cal EVIP project, Cal EVIP stands for California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project. It is an EV charging project to incentivize level-two and DC fast charging based off of regional needs. The project is funded by the California Energy Commission and is implemented by the Center for Sustainable Energy, who was competitively selected through a bidding process. Thus far, Cal EVIP has funded around $50 million in regional projects in locations such as Fresno and Sacramento County. Cal EVIP is typically funded on a county level, based off of California Energy Commission requirements. And due to the interconnection between San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, as well as our shared focus on accelerating EV adoption, the following list of community choice aggregators in municipal-owned utilities in the two counties collaborated together to make a proposal to the California Energy Commission to start a project in our two counties. Our project is called Peninsula Silicon Valley Project, and there are two types of sites that are eligible, or I'm sorry, the following is the eligible sites that are available for level-two and DC fast charging stations. So for level-two charging, these will typically be done at workplaces, schools, hospitals, and maybe more importantly, multifamily dwellings. The key thing to note is that single-family homes are not eligible to receive these incentives. For DC fast charging, these will be installed at shopping centers, gas stations, hotels, and airports. And the requirement there is that they must be public and must be publicly available 24 hours, seven days a week. In terms of eligible applicants, both private companies and public agencies can apply. So that includes San Jose's own departments are eligible to apply to this program. The following slide gives you a sense of California Energy Commission, as well as partner-planned funding levels by entity. One thing to note is that the partner funding levels also need their respective board or city council approvals. And I also wanted to make note, based off of the current proposal, the California Energy Commission will be planned to invest $10 million in the City of San Jose, while San Jose Clean Energy will invest $4 million, giving us $14 million of possible incentives. In addition, there will be a requirement for the City of San Jose that 25% of those $14 million of incentives are invested in either disadvantaged communities or low-income The following slide gives a sense of the anticipated incentive levels. The points that I want to make regarding this slide is that for both level-two and DC fast charging, there is an incentive adder if the site is located either in a disadvantaged community or low-income community. There's also an incentive adder for multi-unit dwellings that are going to be investing in level-two charging projects. So for example, if a multi-unit dwelling that's located in a disadvantaged community applies, they will receive a total per connector rebate of $6,500. The following slide gives you a sense of both the current and targeted EV charging ports in 2025, and this comes from the Department of Transportation Draft Electric Mobility Roadmap. In orange is what the estimated amount of charging ports that are available after Cal EVIP. So while not reaching the target in 2025, Cal EVIP does help us to get much closer. So the following slide gives you a sense of some of the advantages of this program. It includes aligning with San Jose Clean Energy's program-guiding principles. It is a one-time opportunity to receive match funding to operate a electric vehicle charging infrastructure program. We have an experienced program administrator in the Sustainable Energy that has operated these programs in other parts of the state. And the project is aligned with the actions as described in the Department of Transportation's Electric Mobility Roadmap draft. So quickly, I just want to also walk through in the next two slides, the application process for an applicant. So for a level-two charging project, the applicant will first upload their documents onto the Cal EVIP portal. The CSE will check those documents. If they all work out, the CSE will reserve the funds, and the applicant will have nine months to complete the project. When they're completed, they will upload their documents to the portal, and if approved, the applicant will receive a rebate check based off of their location. The next process for DC fast charging is the same, except for one additional step, step five, that provides the rebate when design and permitting is completed. And that's primarily because of the longer lead time for DC fast charging projects lasting up to 15 months. Looking into the future, the current timeline is to go live and receive applications in May of 2020. We expect to also do a program webinar to potential applicants in the early part of 2020 to get the market ready. So to summarize, we're recommending to adopt a resolution to approve implementation of this project in San Jose, to approve participation of San Jose Clean Energy in CSE's current round of funding, and authorize the Director of Community Energy to exit an agreement with the Center for Sustainable Energy to administer San Jose Clean Energy funds. So at this time, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Kevin, and thanks to you and Lori and Zach for all your work on this. This is a really exciting opportunity for us. All right. Questions? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I just have one question. I appreciated all the financial information at the end of the memorandum, but I didn't see an answer to this question, which is, does this change the time when we will hit our reserve target?
It does not. So as you'll note in the memo, we are proposing to cosher our portion of the funds toward the latter end of that. So we intend to hit our initial operating reserve of $20 million by the end of this year. And then by the end of the fiscal year, we intend to pay off the commercial paper that funded, and we are on track to do that. We do not expect that this participation in this program will change that.
But the full 180 days operating reserve, were we always targeting January 2026?
Yeah, I mean, we have a financial performer that models many different things, including where PG&E's rates are going, the PCIA, power supply costs. And our projection has always been relatively within that timeframe. It does a little bit delay our meeting that overall 180 days, but it's a pretty small portion of the overall operating reserve that we need to fund. And as you can see in the memo, the reason we are recommending proceeding with this is it's a pretty unique opportunity where we couldn't get a lot of state funding for these initiatives.
Totally understand, and I'm supportive of this. I just want to be clear, every time we come, because we said we weren't going to do programs until we hit that $20 million, and we're doing it. And I know that it's a special case, but I just want to make sure that we don't have multiple special cases and we never get to that operating reserve that we're talking about for 180 days, that we need to make sure that we're fully functioning and financially secure.
Thank you so much for saying that. I share that concern and that recommendation, and we will definitely stay on track with this. This was an opportunity that was presented to us from the other CCAs and the municipal utilities in the region, and we knew that they were proceeding with us, and it's a pretty unique opportunity. And certainly, we could have sat out of it, but that would have meant a lot less dollars coming to San Jose. We thought that this was a unique opportunity, but I agree with you, we need to make sure that there's not 100 of these unique opportunities.
Thank you.
We may hit replay on Councilmember Davis's comments, because I know that each of us on this dais has about 100 different uses for all the money that is. We're imagining it's going to happen from San Jose Clean Energy, so thank you for that reminder. I do agree, though, this is an opportunistic exception that we just had to take, because $10 million would be sitting on the table without it. So I really appreciate staff jumping at it. Councilmember Camus.
Yes, I echo, I echo Councilmember Davis's cautious notes. Any given Tuesday, we can come up with a program that we want to fund. Also, I actually introduced a memo, because I thought that this could actually help us with our reach codes, because we've created reach codes that are going to drive up the cost of constructing multi-unit family projects, because it will require these charging stations in there. So we drove up the cost, and I have to say, I think, unless I misunderstood what you said earlier to us, that new construction cannot apply for this, for these dollars.
So new affordable housing construction can apply, but that is all.
So new affordable housing, possibly people who don't need it will be able to get it, but people who may not, will?
Well, our hope is that we will encourage EV adoption in that affordable housing. But you're right, so new development is not eligible, given the way that we applied with the five different agencies.
Yeah, so, yeah, I am a little concerned that we're putting hurdles in the way of new construction, and we're not giving people a hand up. Is there any way to ask for funds from these same agencies to help our people who are willing to invest in new construction that is not necessarily low-income?
Certainly, we can advocate that at the California Energy Commission, and we are also working on a programs roadmap that will come before council in the spring to define how we might spend any additional funds that we have in the later years, and that's something certainly we could consider. But in the short term, we will look for other state and other dollars to fund that need as well.
Yeah, I was, so can you go back to that slide where it had the potential uses of who can apply, or how are we going to use it? Yeah, schools, hospitals, workplaces, multifamily dwellings. How about shopping centers, gas stations? So these shopping centers and gas stations, would they have to be also in lower socioeconomic areas?
No, that's not the case.
No? Okay. Good. Yeah, I imagine, like, if you need, you know, I do have an electric car at home. I don't use it very often, but we charge it every night. And places where we need EV charging would have, should be at, like, shopping malls, where you can go have dinner and spend a couple hours or something. I think those would make more sense. Is there a priority to helping those? Is there a priority to helping those projects come along?
We could certainly do outreach to those types of projects. That's also something, as San Jose Clean Energy, we're very interested in, mainly as we've talked before about the debt curve, and we need to get more people charging during the day, and certainly shopping centers are a good opportunity for that, so it's something we can market. And so certainly, we do have an opportunity to market and outreach to those types of services, and we're happy to work with your office on that.
Yeah, I would, I want this to be implemented, and I want it to be used effectively. You know, helping redo a fourplex that doesn't have any electric vehicles currently in it may not be the right use. Putting something at, say, Oak Ridge Mall when people are shopping for hours, you know, an array of these things might actually yield better results, and it probably could be a win-win for the shopping center owner at that.
Yeah, that's something we're happy to work with your office on. How it works is, you know, each applicant can apply, and it's a first-come, first-served, but obviously, one thing that can really help that is outreach to entities to just make them aware of the program and the funding, so happy to work with you on that.
So on this issue, let's say we set up a, one of these, or we paid $6,000 to, let's say, Oak Ridge Mall, and they set up one of these things. Are we going to be getting the revenues from people charging, or is Oak Ridge Mall, or who gets the revenues from the charging station, and are they allowed to make a profit from those revenues?
Yeah, so let's say that it is a shopping center, and that shopping center is a customer of San Jose Clean Energy. We will increase our revenues by basically providing more electrons to that charging station. How the individual property owner decides to charge the customers or the users of that charging station is really up to them. So for example, some workplaces will not charge their employees and will cover the cost and basically pay San Jose Clean Energy. Some will pass off the cost to their employees or their customers and so forth, so it's really at the discretion of the property owner.
Okay, thank you. And if, and if, how do we, is there like a deadline? We have to spend this money by, like, we have 14 million, and we got to spend in the next two years, otherwise we lose the whatever. What is the deadline?
Yeah, it's, I believe in the memo, it's the end of 2023 is the deadline. Right now, the funding plan is for FY 2021, and FY 2122 is the primary time that we're funding, putting the funds into the account for CSE to manage.
And so how would, what if we don't get enough bidders or interests in, what if we don't get enough people interested in this, in doing these things?
So typically, based off of meetings that we've had with the Center for Sustainable Energy, they have found actually DC fast charging incentives have been locked up within months.
Okay.
So we do not see DC fast charging. So if you look at the 14 million, 7 million of that is going to DC fast charging, based off of market demand in other locations that even have less EV adoption than San Jose, that should be locked up quickly. In the case of Level 2, if we're finding less demand, there's a way for us to adjust our marketing, our approach, as well as even to consider how to allocate that funding to DC fast charging, if that's where the demand is. So we are market responsive. At the end of the day, it's the market that's asking for these incentives, and it's first-come, first-served. The only requirement that we have is that 25% of the total is going to go to disadvantaged and low-income communities.
Okay, so did anybody make a motion yet? No? Well, so if I can, I'll make a motion that you also outreach to businesses, so basically, go forward with your recommendation and do outreach into businesses that are, that can benefit the most from this strategy, so that we can better use this, those funds.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. I just had one quick question, and Kevin, you came on board as a FUSE fellow, and I know you're digging in deep on these issues, and I'm wondering, are there cities out there that have figured out how to use car-share programs to expand adoption of electric vehicles in low-income communities? Because we know that buying any car is a barrier for low-income residents, so it's just not feasible to expect that that's how we're going to get folks out of the internal combustion engines and into cleaner cars. Is anybody doing it well?
I don't think so. I think right now, the models tend to be pilots. The city that's done the most experiments, you can say, is Sacramento, so they have entities such as Envoy that are doing tests there. And I think, I think the market and cities are still, it's two sides. It's how to get people to use the vehicles, what is the right fee model, and then also the businesses that are operating these car-sharing companies, it's even whether they have a viable business. Are they able to negotiate terms with the property owners and charge the customers in a way that can kind of sustainably cover their costs and also expand? I can tell you that our Department of Transportation and San Jose Clean Energy, we work very closely on looking at the different opportunities and models, and we're actually talking with one of those companies right now about doing potential projects. So in the DOT's Draft E-Mobility Roadmap, there is a couple items related to car-sharing, and so each step of the way, we're going to be working with them. And maybe one other point is that, as a community choice aggregator, we leverage the experiences of our other community choice aggregator programs. So as they try these projects out, we'll definitely leverage those good cases and try to bring it onboard.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking, as we're trying to, obviously, we're trying to find more sites to build affordable housing, and some of those sites are not going to be transit proximate, and it seems to me this solution could be really important, so I know there's a larger conversation we need to have with the Housing Department and others, but, you know, it may be worth investing our, some share of our dollars from the city side into car-sharing programs in those affordable housing projects, to give folks the mobility they need, and hopefully spread the adoption as well. Anyway, thank you. Councilmember, yep?
Yeah, thank you. So just three quick questions. With the Level 1 charging, Level 2 charging, Level, what, Fast DC Charging, I assume it's like a higher voltage, and so it's quicker because of the time. Just as a matter of just generic batteries, not car batteries, but if I take like my iPhone, and it comes with a 5-volt charger, and then I use my iPad charger to charge the phone with a 10-volt charger, I believe I'm diminishing the quality of the battery life. Is the same thing true for cars?
So my understanding is, and I'm not an expert on this, but most auto OEMs such as Chevy or Tesla will not allow you to 100% drain the battery and 100% charge the battery itself. My understanding is that that's where you get the most degradation from, so they'll kind of keep a window in which you can charge it within. Most of these vehicles are new, they haven't been in the market for a while, but I think some of the Tesla research shows that there's a lot more, a longer lifetime of batteries than we think. So using EVs, for example, more and more Chevy Bolts that have longer ranges are coming into the market, and I think there's a really good opportunity there for programs related to use electric vehicles, especially the ones that, you know, started three or two years ago. So, yeah.
Okay. With the 14 million that we're going to put towards this incentivizing and doubling the number of EV chargers across the city, that's wonderful news. A question's been posed to me, but do we know if the people will be charged for using these? Will there be free ones, you know, rates, et cetera? Do we know yet?
It's again dependent upon the individual property owner and how they, how they decide to charge their customers. You know, anecdotally, I've heard workplaces, some workplaces providing free charging, that's kind of like an employee benefit in a lot of ways, but I think most of when we, especially when we talk about DC fast charging, I think it will be in those companies' business models to pass off that cost, the electricity cost, to customers.
Okay. And then I guess lastly, are there kind of federal, we're getting some grant money from the California Energy Commission, but are there also federal programs or other funding sources that could also be paired with what we're doing today to incentivize even more of this build-out?
The federal, not that I'm aware of, I wish there was. State, so the primary electric vehicle infrastructure spending has been through PG&E. Their electric vehicle charge network program, that was actually very similar to Cal EVIP, more or less has just ran out of funding and is closing down. But PG&E also has two other charging infrastructure programs. One is for fleets, and another is called Related DC Fast Charging. So there might actually be more DC fast charging installations through PG&E's program. And I should also say that Electrify America, who was born out of the Volkswagen emissions scandal, they've already finished and selected sites in the city of San Jose, actually at shopping centers that haven't gone live yet, but they're in construction right now, and they're going to be starting Cycle 2, which includes sites in the city of San Jose. So, yeah, I think those two vehicles, Electrify America and PG&E are also options.
So I don't know if we have the bandwidth for this, but I would like it, I think it would be good if we could somehow create like a clearinghouse, like a one-stop shop. If we're really trying to incentivize this, and we know that one applicant can benefit from this $14 million, plus also the PG&E program, or also the Electrify America, just have it all in one place, so they know that I can actually maximize my, you know, return or whatever, and really encourage this to happen, that would be great. I don't know if we have the bandwidth, but I'd like to see it.
So Electrify America, I think, is working on something like that, kind of like a Turbo Tax. You throw your information in, and it applies to everything available. In meetings with them, they brought this up. I'll follow up to see where they are with that, that process.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you so, thank you so much. I think that this is an exciting step for the city of San Jose. Just a couple of things. One is, I, I'm actually pleased to see that 25% of it is going into low-income communities. I was looking at the numbers of the amount of rebates, just in my district alone, 95127, 95122, 95116. We're not the primary holders of Teslas, or, well, I was going to say other dog mode cars, but I think Tesla's the only one that has it, right? But we drive. We may, my residents may be lower income than some other areas in the city of San Jose, but we drive. I just bought a hybrid van, by the way, it's the only van that is a hybrid, I won't make a plug, but Chrysler is really great. And so, and I love it, but I'm struggling to charge it. And so I travel throughout the whole city of San Jose, and I don't have any problems when I go into Santana Row, or when I go into Valley Fair, but if I go to Tropicana, or if I go to what's now Calderon's, which used to be Mi Pueblo, there's no place for me to charge it. And it doesn't have a great, you know, doesn't have 100 miles on it. Once you charge it, I think it's 30 miles, because it's a hybrid. And I bring that up because I'm, you know, aside from being a council member, my second job is, you know, a taxi driver for my children, and so I'm driving everywhere, and I'm using that car quite a bit, and that's why we chose to get a hybrid this time. But I just wanted to say that even if it's affordable housing, poor people drive, so let's create an infrastructure that's going to encourage them to drive a vehicle that's going to be good for the environment, good for their wallet, and good for the city of San Jose. Councilmember Camus, I hear your concerns, but it just, sometimes it's just very concerning to, you know, to think that any of us up here still think that poor people are not coming into modern technology or need it, or that we don't need to build the infrastructure. We're not, you know, riding around in rickshaws on the east side of San Jose. You know, there's a lot of folks that have it, and when I looked at the number of rebates in my zip code alone, 95127, 95122, and 95116, again, we're not topping the city of, other areas in the city of San Jose, but there was 735 rebates, and I don't know if it's just in this past year or in the past couple of years, but those are the numbers that we were able to dig up. So it'd be nice if we could offer that opportunity for families. And again, just like we saw with the last item on the digital divide, and once you have the infrastructure there, you see it explode in terms of its use, and folks who may have never been accustomed to it suddenly are becoming proficient in it, probably. And so the same thing, if you don't, if you never build the infrastructure, then we can't anticipate that our residents will ever be able to use that kind of technology. So thank you so much for this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I want to make sure that, you know, I agree with Councilmember Camus in terms of getting out to the businesses and making sure that they're using it. I want to make sure that the Tropicanas, the Calderons, the businesses up and down Alum Rock are not left behind, and that we do the same kind of outreach to them, so that when, you know, myself or my neighbors, by the way, I'm surrounded by neighbors who have Teslas and Priuses, so they're in need of it as well. But I want to make sure that when we're driving through Alum Rock, or through Story Road, or on King, or down White, or on McKee, that those businesses have also had and heard about the wonderful opportunities that we are, here offering to them.
Yeah, that's a great point. We're happy to work with your office on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, I'd like to echo Councilmember Carrasco's comments. I realize that the folks in District 7 might be sort of later adopters, but to say that we're going to put it for people that don't need it is inaccurate. And, and I think that we also really need to look at sort of leveling the infrastructure, because if we don't do it in districts like 5 and 7 and 3 and other parts of the city that really need it, but although the map is pretty clear where the divide is, that they're never going to get it, they're never going to adopt it if they don't have access to it. And so I would also like to offer my assistance. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for businesses, for the shopping centers, for apartment buildings, and again, I would love it for the businesses along Center Road, Tully Road, McLaughlin. There's a tremendous opportunity here to really put in that infrastructure in a part of the city, to make it that much easier for folks to be able to, to use that technology, and to be able to sustain the type of technology, instead of having to worry where they're going to charge it on their side of town. So, so yes, I offer my assistance on that. I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I did not intend to cause a controversy, I just, the new buildings that are going up for homeless, for example, homeless people don't necessarily have cars, and that's where I was going with that statement, and it was no ill intent for District 7 or District 5 folks. I know they don't drive rickshaws. I do want to also, I do want to also, in fact, I want to make an addition to my motion to ask staff to seek opportunities to creating incentives for e-charging stations for multifamily units in general, in general, so not just for low-income, but to help us, we're in a housing crisis, and we need to look for ways to incentivize these folks to invest in our community. And more and more, we're finding out that our fees and our regulations are causing us, causing people not to build. And I would like our department to look for opportunities, like they did successfully for this one, to look for opportunities for grants and what have you, for our builders of all kinds of housing, not, you know, not just low-income housing, but all kinds of housing, so that our, so that our reach codes could be mitigated, and we incentivize people rather than putting more hurdles in their way. And I'm hoping that our secondor could, could say yes to that addition to our motion.
Councilmember Davis nodded her head. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Pralis?
Thanks. Look, I think we've gotten into a slightly different discussion of topics here on this, but I really want to appreciate the support of our San Jose Clean Energy team, and the ability to get these dollars, and look forward to this, in regards to the sort of latest exchange. I I felt it was important to mention that even if, say, for instance, we put this infrastructure into a permanent supportive housing, so development for formerly homeless, there are a number of employees that work in those facilities as well. And a lot of times, that's what the, that's actually what the parking goes to is for the employees. And just like me, when I park my plug-in Prius here down in the charging spots, your place of work is a great place to be charging your vehicle. So it's also, you know, other opportunities that I think that it may not readily come to mind as the first thought, but I believe in the, you know, sort of the same goals that, you know, that this grant is attempting to achieve with the focus on new development for, only for affordable housing. I support that and look forward to that happening across our city.
Okay. I neglected, please forgive me, Alex Caraballo. Give me, you've been patiently waiting to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Alex Caraballo and I'm here to speak on the Electrical Vehicle Infrastructure Project. Firstly, myself as well as many other San Jose residents absolutely support this investment in electrical vehicle supply equipment or what you guys know as charging stations. However, the city would be remiss if we did not, if when we were making these types of investments in infrastructure, we did not use electrical vehicle infrastructure-trained program, certified electricians to install this work. You know, just for instance, sitting here as an electrician in the audience while you guys have been speaking about a lot of electrical issues this evening, including Councilmember Depp's questions about whether or not it's voltage, it's actually amperage, those two things go together, that creates power. But these are the things that need to be known by the people that are working on this infrastructure, especially when you talk about it being at places like schools or businesses or homes where there are people living and there are people that could suffer huge consequences from poor, poor infrastructure building. You know, safety comes to mind, especially public safety, when I, when I think about all work being done in the city of San Jose, that's the first thing that comes to my mind. And for us to be able to really focus on public safety, it's not just police and fire, is also making sure that the places that our residents live and where our children go to school are being built by certified and trained workers who know what they're doing. You know, the EVITP program, which the certification that I was talking about, it, there's a lot of stakeholders in the industry, including automobile manufacturers, BMW, Toyota, GM, manufacturers of the actual stations themselves like Clipper Card, Pep stations, the state and local electrical inspectors that follow under the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. These are all groups that actually support the EVIT program. There are also precedents, precedents all across the state of California as well as nationally, the Port of Long Beach in relation with the California Energy Commission, the cities of Long Beach themselves, Carson, Pico Rivera.
Sir, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments? All right, let's vote then on the motion. All right, the vote is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on then to 7.2, which is Report on Bids and Award of Construction Contract for the Nitrification Clarifier Rehabilitation. Nap, you get the final presentation of the day. Congratulations.
I'm Nap Fukuda, Assistant Director of Environmental Services Department. I am here with Mariana Chavez Vasquez, our Deputy Director for the RWF's Capital Program, as well as Simon Alder, our Consultant Program Manager, and then Matt Keno, Director of Public Works. We have a short presentation for you and I think Simon will take the lead on that.
Thank you, Nap. As Nap mentioned, my name is Simon Alder and I'm the Program Manager on the CIP. And I'm going to present to you on the Construction Contract Award for the Nitrification Clarifier Rehabilitation Phase One Project. So if I start with the project location and overview, the nitrification clarifiers are situated at the southern end of the regional wastewater facility. The clarifiers are this total of 16 in two batteries, a battery A and battery B. It's probably helpful to explain the function of a clarifier. The clarifiers that we have at the facility are circular concrete settling tanks that separate suspended solids from wastewater by gravity as part of the biological treatment process. Settled solids, known as sludge, are mechanically collected by the rotating suction header from the clarifier bottom. Lighter pollutants such as oil and grease, known as scum, are skimmed from the wastewater surface and clarified effluent flows over a weir to the filters. Our clarifiers are 140 foot in diameter, 16 foot deep, and they were built in the 70s and the 80s. A condition assessment was performed in 2017, which shows, shown that many components of the clarifiers and control equipment are nearing the end of their useful life and in poor condition and require replacement or excessive maintenance. The scope of our project is to replace eight clarifier mechanisms, rehabilitate up to eight return-activated sludge pipelines with a cured-in-place pipe lining technique, and for all 16 clarifiers to repair concrete clarifier walls and slabs, replace drain valves and RAS valves, rehabilitate groundwater pressure relief valves, and replace electrical and instrumentation and control equipment for all 16. At the end of this project, we will have improved the operational reliability and efficiency of the secondary treatment process to ensure continued regulatory compliance at the regional wastewater facility. We've got a series of slides just to show you the condition of the existing clarifiers. The first of these is the clarifier mechanism. Each clarifier has a mechanism which is coated steel and because it's coated steel, it requires frequent recoating and excessive maintenance. As you can see from the photo on the slide there, this particular mechanism was severely corroded at the base. In fact, we've had some clarifiers that have been taken out of service due to the corroded nature of the clarifier mechanisms. The project's scope is to replace eight of these mechanisms with stainless steel alternatives, which are much more durable and will require less maintenance during the life of the, of the nitrification clarifiers. The next slide illustrates the concrete repairs that we're going to be performing on the 16 clarifiers. The condition assessment also indicated that the overall clarifier structure is in good shape, but there were a number of cracking, cracks on the surface of each clarifier that need to be repaired through an injected sealing material process. And the approximate length of all cracks is around about 5,000 linear foot. We also are rehabilitating groundwater pressure relief valves, which you can see in the photos here. Each clarifier has 30 of these valves around the perimeter. The purpose of the valve is to prevent the clarifier, when it's empty, from being uplifted by excessive groundwater pressure due to a high water table. The condition assessment revealed that a number of these valves were in poor operation due to clogging and corrosion, and so the project will replace all of the valves and all 16 clarifiers. We also will be repairing 24-inch return-activated sludge lines. We performed a CCTV inspection of these lines, which indicated, as you can see from the photos, some leaking and some separated joints. We identified that we will need to replace or line three of these RAS lines. And we also are going to have the contractor perform additional inspections on the remaining five to determine if they will need to be lined as part of this project as well. We are also replacing influent drain and return-activated sludge valves and electrical equipment. The top-left photo on this slide shows a condition of a butterfly valve, which should rotate to seal and enclose the pipe. As you can see, it's in pretty poor condition, which makes it difficult to operate and for the sealing to occur. And then the other two photos show some of the corrosion that we have on electrical panels and conduits. In terms of the summary of bid results, we received, well, we pre-qualified six contractors and received four bids. The engineer's estimate for this project is $43 million with bids ranging from 26 to 38 million. The lowest bidder was CEOver and Company. We did look into the reason for the lowest bid coming in quite lower than the engineer's estimate, and we feel there's a number of reasons for this. One, the mechanisms that I was just explaining before did come in lower than the engineer's estimate had assumed. And I think part of that was due to the competitive nature of the bidding, as well as what we call bid day pricing, when quotes typically come in lower than the budget quotes that we'll get when we pull the estimate together. Also, CEOver and Company are already at the facility working on two projects, the cogeneration facility and advanced facility control and meter replacement project. And as, because of this, it's likely that they were able to save on mobilization and supervision and overhead costs because they already have, already have a presence on site. Also, this project is going to be subject to the project labor agreement, which is the first of our projects on the CIP to do so. The construction schedule, we're proposing to start in about November with substantial completion in August 2022. The reason for the fairly long construction schedule is because we have to work around the operation of the facility. And in particular, we have to do a lot of this work in the summer, dry season, when the flows are lower, and also tying into the planned maintenance periods for each battery, in battery B in 2020 and battery A in 2021. We also need to make sure that the work we do on the clarifiers mean that they're available when the wet season starts in about the October period so that we don't impact the overall operation of the facility. In terms of the project cost, total project cost is $45.7 million. As mentioned, constructions at 26.2. Project delivery, which consists of the design, the project management, construction management, and other things such as environmental permitting, is about $14.3 million. And we're proposing a construction contingency of $5.2 million, which is 20% of the construction amount. This is slightly more than our typical 15%, and this really reflects the complexity of the project, the challenges that we're going to be facing in terms of utility conflicts, project interfaces, the RAS lines, which will be, which will be worked on in a confined space, and then the overall complex work sequencing of the project and trying to fit it into that summer season that I was talking about before. We did do some benchmarking against other Bay Area projects. The challenge is always to find an apples-to-apples comparison. What we did is we focused on the clarifier mechanisms and we aggregated down to a cost per diameter foot because some of the other projects we looked at were different diameter clarifiers. The most recent project was East Bay Mud in 2018 with a very similar price to what we're seeing for our mechanisms. The SFPUC price was slightly less, but that was back in 2015. And since then, stainless steel has gone up about 23%. And so at today's prices, it is pretty similar to what we saw. So to summarize, we are looking to recommending for the award of the Construction Contract for this project to CEOver and Company with a 20% contingency and authorization for the Director of Public Works to execute change orders up to the total contingency amount. And with that, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for everyone's ongoing work on this very massive multi-billion dollar retrofit we've got working on. All right, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. And Matt, I want to thank you and your team for answering some of our questions in advance. But I just want to just kind of loop back on our questions about small business participation. Can you kind of walk me through some of the barriers or challenges that you've had or having in terms of either breaking off smaller contracts for this type of work or having a relationship with the prime and subcontractors as it relates to small business?
Sure, I'll, and then, yeah, I know you asked small businesses, but I do want to mention something. In our memo, Overa, who is the company we're recommending awarding to, we do say they're from Richmond and that's where their headquarters is, but they do have a local San Jose office. So we do consider, consider them a local business as a prime contractor for this award. And they, as our current city policies, we don't require any thresholds for local subcontractors to be used. It's really at the option of the prime contractor. We do try and encourage it as where we can. And what we really focus on is trying to network our local subcontractors with the prime contractors that are local and the prime contractors that are working on our projects so that they can develop those relationships. For example, Overa's website has a place where if you're a subcontractor, you can go onto their website and apply to be pre-qualified with them. And so that's something that, we're really just getting into that a little more right now and trying to set up those systems with environmental services and public works. And it's something we want to continue to push. But as far as breaking the project up, this is one, you know, this is a tough project to break up. It's such a, such a massive project and, but we would always, and at the regional wastewater facility, most of the projects are really large and massive. And so we really see the local angle at, for subcontracting opportunities and to try and continue to build them up.
Right. And that's one of the reasons why, actually, it raised a certain level of concern because when we talk, we go out to the local small business community and we talk about the billions of dollars that are going to be spent on contracts, the wastewater facility is going to be a major component of those dollars. And I understand that they're complex projects, but there's also some lower skill or lower complexity component to that, whether it's hauling debris from the site or having someone out there directing traffic, you know, slow stop, you know, those types of lower skill, lower demand types of activities. So I just want to just put that on our radar screen in terms of trying to identify in these projects, opportunities for small business to be able to participate in those projects.
Agreed. And I know Nap wants to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on, as far as marketing and reaching out to local small businesses, the facility, the CIP program, we do at least annually, if not twice a year, an open house where we invite primes, subs to talk about the projects, again, in an effort to put them together so they can try and partner together and promote, I think, where you're headed and asking about, so.
You're referring with people working on some of these activities. This is a PLA project, so all of the, as a, as a prime resource will be local halls. So people that are part of our local halls will be working in, as, as part of the project anyway.
Right. But I'm, I'm thinking about the smaller companies that would still hire those union employees, but it's smaller companies working on these, these projects versus, or at least a small portion of these projects versus the larger companies.
As Matt said, as part of our procurement strategy, we, as he mentioned, I mean, we just know that requirement right now, and as you know, is a low bid, so we just go by that threshold right now.
I just want to add one more thing. I mean, you're, you're correct. I mean, we looked at all the bidders and none of them had local subcontractors used. And so even though we have been doing things to try and promote them, we realize we haven't solved that yet. And so we'll continue to push those connections between the local subcontractors and businesses and these primes to make sure that we can make progress on this.
Is there anything we could do from a policy perspective to incentivize the primes to, to bring in local, I mean, I'm sorry, not local, but small subs?
That's something that we can continue to talk about. With the regional wastewater facility in particular, we follow state law for a lot of our requirements, so we'd have to look into that. And, but as we continue to report annually to the Community and Economic Development Committee on the success of our, or not of our local and small business participation, our hope is that the techniques we're using to network and mentor and link companies together will, and where we can, take apart our designs to allow smaller contractors to be able to bid as primes. We hope that those methods that we talked about with our Public Works Academy and what the regional wastewater facility's already been doing for a while will, will help solve that problem. If not, we could go to sort, certain policy requirements and percentages of local contractors in the future.
Well, I would definitely like to explore that. And thank you for addressing my concerns and I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion second. Councilmember Camas?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate you taking the time to put in that side-by-side comparison with other projects. You know, a lot of these multi-billion dollar projects, you know, we lose track of how to weigh what costs are unless we have these comparisons. So I appreciate you took the time to do that. I do have one question. So I appreciate you took the time to do that. I do have one question about the 20% contingency fee. Most, most, most of the work usually, you know, goes with a 15% contingency fee and this is hefty.
Is it good? Sorry. One of the reasons why we're doing this, a lot of the work that we have to do involves underground piping. We have had a lot of experiences recently with problems with our underground piping because of the operation. We couldn't investigate fully all of that piping because of being able to take these units out of service. So we know that we may find a little more than what we thought, so we just want to be able to have that money available if we need to. There is, as, as was mentioned, there is some component in this project that is a time concern, so we can just do this during the dry season, so it's only like the six months that we have during the summer. So if we need to go ahead and make any repairs, we need to be able to do it at that time. So we are just want to have that money in reserve in case we need it and we don't have to come back and ask for it that will kind of delay the project.
I appreciate that. I would love to know one of these days if, if, if projects actually go under the contingency fee sometimes, you know?
We have, we have. Some of our projects can come back and report, but some of our projects have actually come under the, under the full contingency.
Yeah.
So it does happen.
I see, I, I know that in, in my position, I only get the worst-case scenarios where you're asking above what the contingency was, but it'd be good to, to, to get your successes, you know, sometime.
I think we should come back with a session just to show you the ones we have done.
Thank you. And I appreciate your work.
All right. I think that is it from the council, so let's vote. Thanks, everybody. Good luck with construction. Okay. We have two members of the community who'd like to speak for open forum, Daniel Rigby and Rebecca Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Daniel Rigby, President and Operations Officer of San Jose Rescue. I come for you today. Since 1969, we've been here for the city, for the members, for the, for everyone, for the county, from when the team was founded back in 1969 until now. And now, we need our, we need your help. For the last three years, we've gone without any type of memorandum of, memorandum of understanding. The old Office of Emergency Service had, back in the 80s, consolidated with San Jose Fire. We came under San Jose Fire and our last memorandum of understanding has been since 1981. Three years ago, when the council finally refunded, funded the Office of Emergency Services, we came back under them. Now, since they've been changed over to the Office of Emergency Management, we've been left without any type of help. We've tried with the city's fire department, or we're still waiting for any type of contact with the police department. Our problem is we're coming to a crossroad. We're not going to be able to provide any more services that we use to, all on a voluntary basis. We've received no monetary support from San Jose, or from any. We have one grand every year that pays roughly our insurance and maintenance and fuel costs for the donated surveyed, surveyed vehicles that the city of San Jose has been donating to us. But that was 12 years ago when we last had it, had any type of service or any type of response. At this time, we're not able to take, we will not be able to take and ask, or be able to take and help with the police department's call for a walk-away Alzheimer's, or even saving someone at the annual turkey trot when the event comes in back. Our other problem is we need a permanent home.
Sir, thank you.
It was great.
I, I, I'm sorry, your time's expired, but if you could hang around for a minute and perhaps we can approach you and try to figure out how we can address this.
I'm sorry?
If, if you could just stay around for, for a couple of minutes until the end of public comment and then we'll be able to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. After the, thank you very much. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rebecca Lewis and I'm here to share what a senior citizen, which I am, hi, thank you. I'm a senior citizen and I wanted to report and ask for an investigation to be made at this property. I went to apply for a senior building on Coleman in San Jose and the rent was $1,594 September last month. Two weeks later, I am a Housing Authority Section 8 person. Two weeks later, Mayor, they raised the rent from $1,594 to $2,234, a $640 increase within a two-week period. I called housing to speak to a supervisor and they told me they are aware of the problem. My brother just died. I'm in a two-bedroom. I have to get out by next month. My only option now is to go into a shelter, because I work in home service. I take care of seniors. And I can't afford, my check will not allow me to pay what housing is telling me to pay. So I'm going to wind up in a shelter myself. And I just wanted to say, I have the proof, the Section 8 list to show they went from $1,594 to $2,34. And I just wanted to report that, Mayor. You know, and I, and I follow Ms. Davis and Johnny on TV and also you, Mayor. I watched you last night, matter of fact, Channel 2, about the homeless. But I, I just want someone to investigate them raising rent from $640 in two weeks because they know housing will pay $2,234. They have six sister buildings. So all of the buildings is going to wind up going from $1,594 to $2,34.
Ma'am, thank you. Could you please hang around for just a moment?
Yes, I will, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for hearing my cry.
Okay. All right, then. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.